You can't enable the videos from the participant list?
No. Oh, here we go. I think that works. Does that work?
Let's see. Oh, yes, it does.
But just.
Doug is on as an attendee, so someone needs to make him a... And Meg, Doug and Meg are...
We'll get them on the participant list.
Yeah.
There's Meg. And enable video on them as well. And we're just waiting for Greta.
Yeah, the number at top of the agenda, it was just the webinar address. Was there supposed to be like a user and a password in there instead of just a general webinar? Because I think what we got was just to come in as a participant rather than...
We don't have one that has a password protection on it usually.
Okay.
All right, everybody should be able to get on camera.
If they so wish.
Yes.
You're on mute, Robin.
Board members need to be on camera.
I unmuted, can you hear me?
Yes.
Got you.
Okay.
Here's Kristi.
Nina, can you upgrade Michael Hartman to a panelist?
Done.
Michael?
Abby's trying to join, she just left a chat.
Okay.
Okay.
Maybe is Greta out there waiting?
No, she's not. Greta would be on the attendee list. Everybody there would be on the attendee list. She's not on the attendee list yet.
Yeah, but somehow I had to get permission too to join.
But you were on the attendee list. I could see your name there. Her name isn't there. And Abby's name was there. And Doug's name was there before he... And maybe my name was there before I came on, I don't know.
Hello. Hi, Anne.
And Lori Lee is... She said she's only in as observing.
And Lori Lee's... Will come in for just the T-curd application, the rest she's not on.
Correct.
Then you should make her a panelist at the time of the T-curd application.
Correct.
So...
And promote Abigail Roberts.
It's exciting, seniors graduated from Amerenick High School and Abby gets promoted.
There she is.
What a day.
Can you hear me?
Didn't know what was happening.
Frank, is that you? You gotta turn your audio on, I think. Your video.
We hear you, Frank.
There you go.
On my camera. Okay, there it is.
Greta's there, so someone could let her in.
Keep the door open. All right.
Her name appeared.
There we go.
There's Greta.
To say one advantage of this is I have, you know, my monitors up for my work now, so I can see all of you. And then I can look at the materials we're talking about on the other screen, which is kind of a nice... Kind of nice.
You got the work from home thing.
Right, it's like...
I would die without multiple monitors. I need different monitors for different things.
I'm happy I have one monitor right now.
You know, if mine didn't come with a laptop, I wouldn't have any.
It's 7:04.
Are we all here? Yes.
Yes.
So we can begin, yes?
Yes.
Okay, does Nina, do you want to... Somebody want to... Nina, do you want to introduce, explain to everybody how this is going to work, et cetera, please?
Sure, sure. Hi, I'm Nina Peake. I've met several of you before at the ZBA meeting. I am tagging in for Ashley Li tonight. As your IT meeting facilitator, so, you know, appreciate your contributions with a little bit of a learning curve. So, everybody that is on the board and that you can see in your matrix right now are panelists tonight. For anybody that's a member of the public that's attending the meetings, you can use via Zoom, use the raise your hand feature, which is at the appropriate time. It should be at the bottom of your screen. Those attending the meeting tonight via phone, you can press *9 and your telephone number will come up. If you wish to make public comment at the appropriate time, someone will call on you, will read out your phone number. And then the chairwoman will call upon you to offer your public comment. Also, if you're submitting public comment by email, that will go to Betty Ann and she will either forward those emails to me or she will field those and read your comments into the record as appropriate. Please, that's it.
Thank you. Okay, so I guess I should say, welcome to the June 4th meeting of the Village of Amerenick Zoning Board of Appeals. Okay, so the first item on the agenda, and I don't have the updated agenda, but I think you would put first. First, I'm not familiar with this. Is it Mr. Harrigan, one of our panelists?
Hartman.
Mr. Hartman.
All right, go introduce him, please.
Okay, so joining you tonight is Mr. Michael Hartman. And so he is a colleague of mine at Abrams Fensterman. And he is going to be shadowing in essence for the next couple of meetings through July. I don't believe we have an August meeting. And then hopefully by fall, likely September, he will be your counsel for the board. Ed Smith, who you had previously, unfortunately, has a conflict at this time of night. He's on a board and, like I said, it conflicts with when the ZBA meetings are. So Michael will be your counsel in fall. So, welcome, Michael.
Thanks for having me. Nice to see everyone and it's a pleasure to be here.
Very formal. I like that.
Got his tie on.
Yeah, really, white shirt and everything.
I might lose the tie over time. We'll see.
Okay, so the first item on the agenda is, I think we have discussion of...
The adoption, right, the adoption of resolution process.
So let me explain the issue that... Just the process, and this should be short, hopefully, then we can do this quickly. And we don't have to do anything. Basically, the way the board has for many years, I can't remember for how many years, adopt... When an application is closed and then the board discusses it and then the board decides it wants to vote on it and actually does vote on it, we lay out at the board meeting what we're voting on, what we're approving, what conditions are. And then Betty Ann writes it up with a lot of boilerplate and we review and if it's consistent, maybe edit it. And that's what's signed. And the question has come up whether or not that's what we should be voting on, an actual written resolution each time, rather than just on sort of a discussion, you know, an approval theoretical. And so there are two... So that's up to, we can vote on whichever way the board wants to do it. Now, basically, right, I should say, at the moment, what we've done is the vast majority of resolutions we discuss, we decide what we want to do, we vote on it, then it's written up. Sometimes when we have a particularly difficult one or a particularly controversial one, we ask council's office to prepare the resolution in advance. When a resolution is prepared in advance, first, we have to determine as sort of a straw vote which way the board wants to go because we have to give direction to Betty Ann or if it's council, council's office as to how to do it. But we don't actually vote until the written resolution is put before us. We've edited it, made the changes we want, et cetera. So the real question we have to decide tonight is whether we want to do that. Now, certainly, at any particular meeting for any particular resolution, someone can say, look, I really need to see it written before we vote. And that's fine, we can keep doing, that's the present system. Or we can just make every single resolution, require it to be written, and then voted on. If we do that, just to make you aware of how this would work, that would mean, let's assume we had a hearing tonight, a new application that was up tonight, it was a very straightforward application, maybe a special permit for a restaurant, and it was a very straightforward, no issues. We couldn't vote on it tonight because we would have to tell, let's say, Betty Ann in this case, that we wanted to adopt it, which way, what any conditions were. She would draft it, so at the next meeting, we would vote on it. So for those non-controversial applications, it would automatically, it would just delay them. So I leave it open to discussion if anyone wants to say anything.
Is there an alternative that we could actually vote to adopt a resolution, but we're not taking the final vote? That we have... Excuse me? That we have our discussion and we have findings, we are drafting conditions, and we are voting that we would like to adopt a resolution, but we do not have the final resolution in front of us. You're saying it's a straw poll, but I would like to consider whether or not we couldn't... I would like to ask council if we couldn't adopt the resolution with these findings, to adopt a resolution when it is drafted, but we know that it's not the final form of the resolution. And in that way, the applicant would know where we're going. And as you pointed out, Robin, we would have to reopen the hearing if, to make a change. So the applicant is not delayed, at least it isn't filed, but at least has an understanding of where we're going. And then we could vote on the actual text of the resolution to finalize that one.
I'm sorry, I don't understand the thing. What's the difference between what you're saying and what we do currently in the case of, let's say, a complex resolution? We tell, we... So we have a complicated issue. We tell, we usually get the council's office to draft it if it's complicated, right? So we say what we want to do as a board, we take a tentative vote because we have to give council's office some idea. They have to know what they're drafting. We set out the conditions, we set out anything particularly we want to say, and it's drafted. How does that differ from what you're proposing?
I'm proposing that we actually are making more of a formal vote, that we intend to vote that way, so that applicants are not delayed in understanding where the board is headed. But if that's not a possibility, if we have to truly make it a very informal straw poll, then I would suggest that we always make it a straw poll and we get to have the text in front of us sent to us before the next month's meeting, so that we take the final vote at that meeting. I... But there is that delay of a month, but that's all for, as you're right, for 95, 90, probably over that percentage of resolutions, we would not have to make changes, so it would not be any more time. It's just the delay of the month to actually take the vote, but it would not be any more drafting. The only time it would be more drafting is when we actually had problems with the way it was drafted. There was misunderstanding or, you know, it was oral, and so we took it different ways. And in that case, we should be re-editing it.
So Meg, Doug, I'm sorry, Greta, Doug, Abby, any thoughts on this?
I like the idea because I also just worry often between when we discuss something and when we, you know, close an argument, vote on it. A month or two months can sometimes go by. So I like the idea of having that resolution in front of us to vote on, so that we very clear on what we're voting on, kind of see it. I like that idea, although I do wonder if it's just yes or no vote and very simple, if we can avoid that, so that we have like a screening process.
There's no such thing as a yes or no vote. Remember, whatever we vote on, we have, there are, right, we have to make findings and we have to have... We don't have to have conditions, but we have to have findings. So once you have to have findings, there's no such thing as the yes or... The yes or no vote would be, yes, we would tell, let's say, Betty Ann, yes, we can make all the findings and we're going to approve it, that's what everyone wants to do. So the, you know, and that's fine, we can do it that way. Doug and Greta, does that work for you?
Yeah, I think, for me, I think we'll have better resolutions and more thoughtful resolutions if, at least for me, if I can read it and see if there are any issues with it, see if there's any way I want to distinguish it from another matter. I just, I think it's, it does delay the process, but I think it will be a better product, so I'm all for it.
Okay, so Doug, unless you have some strong objections, that's what we'll do. So...
I'll agree to that.
Chair. Sorry, go ahead, Betty Ann.
No, go right ahead, Kristi.
I think I'm just a little bit confused what the process is here. So we are voting...
No.
Okay, so...
Not voting, we're doing like we did for the last complicated... The last application that we had a draft of, I think, was AVC. Maybe it was Chipotle. I'm just trying to remember ones that we actually had a draft in advance. So the board discussed, and I know Chipotle, we had a written draft, so let's go back to Chipotle. The board discussed it, the board discussed what we wanted to have in the, you know, the points we wanted to make, the findings, any particular findings. We discussed the conditions we wanted, we took a tentative vote, which actually changed between the tentative vote, the directions stayed the same, but one of the members actually changed their position, which is fine because it wasn't a real vote. So we took a tentative vote to give direction to you. You then, or maybe it was Ed, Ed, I guess, drafted it up, drafted up the resolution. And then at the next meeting, we had discussion and a vote on the actual resolution that we'd be adopting, which is good, which makes it much clearer on what we're adopting, which is great.
I think that's fair. I just, I was going to make that suggestion that, you know, we draft up the resolution for you so that you have a copy and can review it at the meeting and vote on that actual resolution. And then we'll make any changes as needed at the meeting.
No, yes, yes, just changes, but you don't draft it up until after the board has given you direction as to which way I want to go.
Exactly. So it's basically the board agrees for us to go draft it, we draft it, and then you look at it at the next meeting, review it, make any changes necessary, and then vote on that resolution.
And it would be great if you could send it to us before. It is a whole month, so I don't think it would rush the process. Not that we're going to send it in, but that it would help cut down our time at the meeting. I don't want to start reading it at the meeting, but if we had it the week before with our packet, and so we could all review it. And if we really had a huge problem or something, you know, actually just maybe reach out to you, Kristi, or something. I doubt that that would ever happen, but so that we're not stuck at the meeting that night trying to plow through.
We can't do that. If we have any discussion on the, I think, if we're going to discuss, if you have a typo, right? You voted yes and she has it down that you voted no. Call her, but if you say, oh, no, I didn't really want to put those conditions, I wanted a whole different set of conditions. That's changing what we discussed.
What I meant was basically not to discuss among ourselves for sure. I wasn't really thinking of this for discussion. It was must have cut down the time to read it at the meeting. If we've all reviewed it before we get there, it's better. I just wondered if one of us, not in a circle, not discussing with anybody else, if we wanted to say, hey, Kristi, at the meeting, I'm going to be asking for something like that, can you be prepared? But if that's not appropriate, that's fine. I'm just basic, the most thing is I'm asking, can we get it with our packet or the week before? So we can all read these before we get there.
I think we should, absolutely, we should get at least a week ahead. I don't know about with the packet because that might come in sometime, but a minimum of a week ahead would be great.
Okay, that's fine. I would say for any substantial edits, they should be made at the meeting. Any edits that are more inconsequential can be made, so just send me an email and say, I see a typo, right? And then I can fix it and something along those lines. But again, anything that's more substantial should be discussed at the meeting. So if you are thinking of a condition that you would like on there, hopefully, you can bring it up at the meeting prior and then we can make sure it's captured. If not, think about it and have it ready for the next meeting.
So Chair, I was wondering for the, as you said, simpler applications, maybe a special permit for a restaurant, that something simple, why not move to maybe a template resolution that the board is satisfied with, that for each application, when we're going through deliberations, right then and there, everyone's looking at that format, that basic format, and that's where we fill in the blanks. That's where we hash out that language, so that the board is satisfied.
It's not going to work. It's got to be, everyone need, if we're going to have a written resolution that we're voting, then we... I mean, we're going to have a template because we have basic, I mean, a lot of the, any of the approvals are, you know, there's a lot of similarity and a lot, you just are just template. But once we're putting in language the words, unless we're going to dictate it to you while we're sitting there, and I think that really loses the point of this, which, I mean, to me, the main advantage of this way is that we get a chance to think about it rather than on the fly. So it's, I can't, I have to give you, you know, I mean, a lot of it's going to be boilerplate. We're not going to dictate, we're going to, right? So if we stay, so the only difference is going to be, let's say, for a simpler application. So let's say we're approving a special permit and the hours are whatever they are, and no music, and three other conditions. And we said, and we, okay, so now we've done that, we've made the findings, we've... You're going to write it up exactly as you would write it up now, except that it won't be final until it comes back to the board and the board then votes on that written resolution. So it shouldn't make, it really shouldn't change, it just, it adds timing, but it shouldn't make more, that piece shouldn't make more work for you.
Correct. It just adds more time to an applicant that needs to open their restaurant or get their business rolling. It adds another month to that process. And it does, maybe I'm out of turn, but it does add to their escrow as well. Now, their escrow is two meetings as opposed to possibly one. And I just, sorry, I look at the small business people that are trying to get special permits and they need to get rolling. I know maybe it's not a concern of the board, but it's just a factor that I think of since I work with them so closely.
What is the, what does the escrow cover at the meetings that it says for two meetings? And what is it paying for at this meeting? And what is it paying for at this meeting? And if there were.
It's the, the land use attorney's review.
And then also any edits that we make to the resolution and any resolution drafting.
Right, but that's not going to change right now. If Betty Ann drafts a resolution and I review it and I find that, oh, you missed this point, you have to, she's going, it's got to be revised anyway. So that doesn't add cost to that. So what does, you're coming to the meeting anyway. What additional costs are incurred by this process since it had to be written anyway? What additional costs are incurred? I understand the time, which I agree, that is one problem with. The only problem that I see with this is the delay. Other than that, I don't see any problem. But what is the cost that is additional cost? Because if Betty Ann is drafting it, then it isn't asking council to draft. And so that shouldn't be an additional cost. And if council's office is going to review it, they're going to review it anyway. So that shouldn't be an additional cost. So I'm not sure why there's additional councils or escrow costs.
Well, if it's discussed at the second meeting during the deliberations of the resolution, then that adds to land use attorney's fees being charged to the escrow.
For the land use attorney's fees, in other words, there are one, two, four items on tonight, whether they're for vote or for public hearing. Does, does, does our council's time get divided among those four hearings or how does that work then?
No, we, we only bill for re, work on the resolutions, drafting the resolutions, reviewing the resolutions.
So then there's no additional.
Okay.
She might mean the time for their attorney, right? Like if I'm a small business and I hire.
Yes.
That would, yes. I mean, it, it would to the applicant. That's not their escrow, but yes, it does add to the applicant.
Because we're, we've already closed the hearing. So all we're doing is voting. There's nothing they can say and they're just going to read it. So it shouldn't incur, add additional cost to their.
Even if the attorney's there, it's closed, so the attorney couldn't speak for that.
I, I would say that personally, my only point is that I think we want to be careful that when we use the language about adopting the resolution, what conditions we want. I just don't want there to be any reliance on certain conditions that maybe don't come to fruition. So that, that would be my only point is that I think we just have to be very clear that it's a draft and that conditions are subject to change based on further discussion. So that, that would be my only point is I wouldn't want any type of reliance on, on our statement at the prior meeting before adopting the resolution.
After it, it's not any different than the.
I totally agree that, that's just my only, my only point.
Okay, so that's what we will do. Starting tonight, we have two, I don't know how many we're going to vote on tonight, but let's assume we vote on two tonight. We're not going to vote on eight. That means that we're not going to vote on any applications tonight. What we're going to do, the most we're going to do at the end of this meeting or the most we're going to do on any application is we're going to tell Betty Ann, or if it's controversial, tell council's office what we want to do, how we as a board wanted to do. We'll take a straw poll, you know, yes, we're all in favor, no, it's a, only, you know, the majority wants to go this way. And based on that and based on whatever conditions we discuss or findings we discuss or anything else we discuss, Betty Ann will draft it up just as she would if we had actually voted. And that will be distributed one week before the next meeting at which time we will vote on it. I have one with time and I have no idea what's going to be on the next meeting, but I point, I raise this just so you can keep in mind in thoughts for next time, which is we don't have a meeting in August. If, if there is an application for like a special permit next time or even a variance, if there is a fairly straightforward application and we discuss it in July, they would not be able to open their business until September. So that's, even if we wanted to, so unless we decide for that application, which we can always do. We can always say that for any particular application, we're not going to use the drafting, the resolution in advance procedure. Does that work?
And please remember next month's meeting is July 23rd. It's not the first week of July. So it's July 23rd with a deadline of June 24th.
So actually the gap between July 23 and the beginning of September is not so onerous as the beginning of July.
But anything not voted on tonight brings it to the end of July as opposed to the beginning.
Okay, so I think we're done with this. So let's proceed to the public hearings. So the first public hearing is call number one, I 2020, Teakert, 130 Beach Avenue Appeal. Okay, does the applicant wish to say anything?
Mr. Teakert, if you could. Before we go forward.
Yeah.
Robin, I was hoping to talk to Charlotte, ask some questions for, to Charlotte Mountain and she doesn't seem to be here. Could we, could we get her to zoom in on the meeting?
I don't know, Frank, is that possible to do?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, Mr. Teakert, thank you.
Okay, great, thanks. Yeah, the Zoom had to reload.
Stuart, we're, we're discussing a little matter for.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Hold on. Frank, is it possible to get hold of Charlotte Mountain to, to call in or show up?
I'll, I'll try calling her on the cell, I can do that.
Okay, that would be great, thank you. Okay, sorry, go ahead Stuart, you can proceed.
Thank you. Good evening, I'm happy to see everybody looking so well. I have thought about the most efficient way to present to you regarding the multiple submissions.
They want you to go in on the Zoom. Can you, can you come into the Zoom?
Frank, mute yourself.
I'm, I'm sorry, you can't hear me?
Hold on a second, I'm trying to mute myself here.
Nina, can you mute him?
Yes, I can.
You're good, Frank. You can go ahead and.
Go ahead. I have thought about the most efficient way to present to you regarding the multiple submissions not yet discussed. My submission prior to the last meeting and the three recent submissions by the Building Department and Village Attorney. And if the members have received them and it's okay, my two late submission. Or I'm happy to wait till the next meeting.
Wait, so the answer to this is, I'm not sure what submission by the village attorney. I don't recall seeing anything from the village attorney, but, no, because, so.
The question, the question's about whether we can discuss my two late submissions tonight and close the public hearing or.
No, Stuart.
I need to wait till the next meeting, that's.
Stuart, that's not my question. You said there were three submissions from the village, including one from the village attorney. And I'm asking you, what was submitted from the village attorney? I didn't receive and the village attorney has recused themselves, so I don't know what you're referring to.
Right, one of my late submissions was that the properties view of the PDF. So, sorry about that.
Mr. Teakert.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Did you, did you not get the email this morning that those supplemental submissions were declined to be distributed to the board?
Okay, so we'll take them up at the next meeting.
Well, wait a minute. At the end of this meeting, just so that everyone is aware, I'm going to propose that we close the hearing. And if the applicant wants to make some additional submittals, he can do it. But we are close, you know, just these two that he submitted today. And unless anyone's going to have any more, let's close the hearing. I mean, there's a point at which we have to create finality about these things. So that's my, I don't know, hang on, just hang on one minute Stuart. That's, we can close the hearing at any time that the board wants to. The fact that we didn't take a late submission just means we're not going to take it. And that we may decide not to, to decide you, you know, to close the hearing tonight in order to take those submittals. But alternatively, we can close the public hearing and take the submittals and, and, you know, that's it. So go ahead, so sorry. Go ahead.
I, I, I misunderstood the policy discussed last week. I thought the policy ended up being that if submissions were made after the 15 days before the meeting, that there was an automatic adjournment of the meeting. So maybe that's not the policy, but I thought that was. I, let me go through my presentation. You can decide whether you're going to close the meeting tonight. And I will just describe what I have put in. You asked about the village attorney. The properties on Mr. Tavolachi's 528 letter to the board showed the creator and modifier of it being the village attorney. So I just want to be, you know, clear on the attribution and the unsigned 519 document from the building department, the creator and modifier with Charlotte now. And that's all, I just want to be clear on what's in the record.
Okay, okay.
I'm happy to answer any question board members may have during or after my presentation. Given that this is the fifth meeting over six months and the conversation has been long and somewhat fragmented, I hope that if I repeat anything said previously, I would be given some latitude. I would like to start with Charlotte Mountain's 519 email. An email I would characterize as a gotcha about my use of the word tenant. Ms. Mountain states in that email, Mr. Teakert has submitted an email as exhibit four. I asked for and just received the email thread that Mr. Teakert was responding to. In the emails, Mr. Teakert does not say he has a rumor, order or roommate. He says he has a tenant. He writes, it's no secret that I have had a tenant on the third floor for 30 years. He is not, that's the end of my quote. He has not characterized the occupant as anything but a tenant until the violations were. 2015 International Property Maintenance Code defines tenant as, quote, a person, corporation, partnership or group, whether or not the legal owner of record, occupying a building or portion thereof as a unit. I believe this means I'm a tenant. I think this means we are all tenants. It seems to be the broadest category you can use. Like the fact that Paul Staincamp listed the third floor of 130 Beach Avenue as where he lives on a form submitted to the village. I don't believe the word, the use of the word tenant is germane. I believe unless you find there is something wrong with my third floor, the fact that Paul Staincamp is my tenant and lives on the third floor is compliant with the law. On a similar topic, at the last meeting, the chair raised the question of whether a microwave is the same as a stove. The 2015 International Property Maintenance Code at 403.3 states, devices such as coffee pots and microwave ovens shall not be considered cooking appliances. The next communication is the 519 Charlotte Mountain Building Department response to my last submission. It is unclear if this response was solicited by the board or not. In her point one, third paragraph, I believe the assumption is made that a space without permanent cooking facilities is a self-sufficient housekeeping unit. I don't believe that's correct. Point one in the fourth paragraph seems to ignore the fact that the Village of Amerenic Code 342-1 says the code must be construed in context with and not in lieu of other laws. Point one, seventh paragraph seems to ignore the 2015 Property Maintenance Code that requires me to provide a tenant with privacy. Point one eighth paragraph claims I, quote, legally illegally, all due to space, close quote, did not, as has been previously explained, the, quote, separate unit, close quote, was created under condominium ownership. Point three of her letter, if, if the board is unclear whether or not the village manager and village attorney currently believe differently about the applicability of multiple dwelling law than last fall, I believe you should ask them for clarity. The building department has observed the occupancy, point, I'm sorry, this is point four in her letter. The building department has observed the occupancy of my third. They have stated no other health and safety concerns that I know of. Yet my building permits or the electrical and plumbing orders to remedy are not being acted on. So I'm unclear whether I should file an appeal on those also. I'm surprised that in the last paragraph, Mrs. Mountain tells the board how they must decide. She says interpretation must be that the third floor is a separate dwelling unit and that the building department's determinations are correct, close quote. It was my understanding that the Z B A is the avenue for residents to question the interpretations of and determinations under the building code that the building department makes. Last email communication is the May 28th email created by the village attorney and attributed to the acting building, it's Tavolachi. It is unclear whether the board requested it or not. Second paragraph, it states that I claim I consider my third floor a, quote, booming suite. I have no idea where this come. I don't believe I ever used that term. It further states that I consider Paul Staincamp my, quote, border. Do not, I've never claimed that I provide meals for Mr. Staincamp. Fourth paragraph, at the beginning, it is stated that, quote, Mr. Teakert has not been charged with violating the multiple, close quote. The letter then goes on for two long paragraph, paragraphs using multiple dwelling laws these times in the arguments. I hope that tonight the board will decide the issue of, well, whether multiple dwelling law is applicable to the building I've. Eighth paragraph ends with, quote, the building department does not consider the stove required for, quote, complete housekeeping, close quote. Is required and I hope this will be clarified as part of the board. Ninth paragraph, the letter states the third floor is not a, quote, rooming unit, close quote, as defined in the Property Maintenance Code, even if that matters. Parenthesis, Mr. Teakert has not been charged with violating the Property Maintenance Code. My violation on order to remedy 19-4655B, the above noted condition is in direct violation 101.2.7.4.4 unlawful structure. An unlawful structure is one found in whole or in part be occupied by more persons than permitted under the 2015 IPMC or was erected, altered or occupied contrary to the law. IPMC is the acronym for the 2015 International Property Maintenance Code. The other item I submitted was I found in our condo association files, the 1999 violation that I spoke about that I received from Lenny Russo and my handwritten notes on it from the time, which were Lenny said could have a sink, could have a fridge, could have microwave. He was here and inspected, said, said everything was okay. So those are the two. I'm happy to answer any questions and would like the opportunity to comment after the board.
Frank?
So.
Wait, I have a question.
Wait, I have a question, Frank. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Is there anything in the folder or any documentation that Lenny Russo inspected that place and passed it?
No, no, there's not. And, and my question for Mr. Teakert, he just made the statement that Lenny Russo said it's okay to have a sink, it was okay to have a, I guess, a coffee pot. But did he, did Lenny Russo say, is it okay to have a stove? The oven that was in that apartment that was there? Mr. Teakert?
You seem to have lost him.
It appears that we've lost Mr. Teakert. When he calls back in, I'll loop him back in.
So I have a question. Do we have any documentation from the attorney on the May 28th? Robert, did you get a letter?
Are you talking to me?
No, I'm actually talking to Robert.
Right, no, did I say that again, Doug? Ask me again?
There was a letter submitted from the village attorney?
I did not see it as I asked Mr. Teakert about. I said, I didn't receive any letter from the village attorney. And then he seemed to indicate that he was referring to something that someone from the village drafted, submitted that was drafted by the attorney, but I don't know what.
My connection is reconnected if I'm unmuted.
Great, go ahead. Okay.
I'm sorry, I don't know where, I don't know where I went out. I don't know where I went out.
I think you had finished. Stuart?
Oh, okay, okay, great. Sorry, go ahead.
I have nothing from the village attorney.
I understand. It was in, it was in my submission that hasn't been forwarded to the board members that I made.
It's in something that we have no knowledge about, no firsthand knowledge about or any information.
Right, but I submitted it for the meeting under the, my expectation of the policy that it would either be accepted. And I wrote Betty Ann a note saying I'd be happy to have it sent to the board. And if they wanted to review it and close the hearing tonight, that would be fine. All I'm asking for is it to be included in the record. And all it is, is the PDF properties that show that the village attorney created the letter for Frank Tavolachi. That's all.
Well, I don't have any documentation, so I understand.
I understand. It wasn't forwarded to you. Maybe Betty Ann can forward it to you now and you'll have it.
What he's stating is, is that a letter that you received that was circulated to the board that is dated May 28th, 2020, building department submission, 130 Beach Avenue. He said that in the properties of that document, it is shown that Mr. Tavolachi did not draft the document. You have the document.
Okay, all right.
Thanks, Betty Ann.
The board does have, I'm sorry, the board does have. I'm sorry, the board has the document, not my submission. I understand.
All right, so we don't have his submissions.
But he's told us now what his submission was to with, that he has, whenever he's got some data that shows that the letter from the, the letter from Frank was drafted by the village attorney. Okay.
That's fine, that's fine. I see Charlotte is on. I know Greta had questions.
Can I just, can I just reply to that? We often, as municipal attorneys, draft documents based upon instructions from clients. And since the village attorney, the zoning board, the village attorney is representing the building department. So there's nothing nefarious about the attorney representing the building department, assisting the building department to draft correspondence.
I'm not suggesting there's anything nefarious. I just wanted to be clear on the attribution of the letter to the board. That's all.
Okay. I see Charlotte's on and I know Greta had some questions for Charlotte.
Yeah, I appreciate you coming and joining the meeting. I do have some questions for you, so I guess you can unmute your Zoom. Okay, so you, you submitted, I have a few questions for you. You submitted, I guess, a couple of weeks ago, a memo to the board to clarify that when you had your discussion with Mr. Teakert, he admitted that he had a tenant in the, in, on the third floor. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, you know, he didn't say roomer, boarder, roommate, but he said tenant. So you had an understanding. And at that time, when he said he had a tenant, he, he said that he thought that was legal under the code. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I have, I have a couple, okay, a couple of questions. So the, the search warrant that you worked on, that you signed off on, you, I gather that you had assistance with that search warrant. Is that correct? I'm drafting that up.
Um, in, in, in the technical parts such as, you know, format and things like that, but that was my language.
Okay, so who helped you with that, doing that search warrant? How many people in, you know, were involved in helping you with that? Looked at and had commented, you know, part of the process? Who was part of the process?
Um, at that time, Dan Gray was with us. Kristy Mason, the attorney. We did have a meet, have one meeting that included Dan Sarnoff, the assistant village manager, Jerry Barbaria, who is the village manager, and I cannot recall. So no, I was going to say, from the police department, we really just contacted them with help to execute the warrant in the end.
Okay. And I gather you've had experience doing warrants before, but that's not the first warrant you've done. Is that right?
Um, that is the first warrant that I've had, that I've drafted for myself.
Okay, okay. So.
But I've seen, I've seen in work.
You know, I went over the warrant. Okay, I'm sorry to interrupt. What were you saying?
I said that I've seen and worked with warrants in the past.
Okay, okay. You know, I read the warrant when it first came, you know, whatever, five or six months ago. And then a couple of weeks ago, I reread it and I have some questions for you based on what I, you know, now know. I guess my first question is, in looking at the warrant, you don't mention that village code allows Mr. Teakert to have a roomer or boarder.
No.
You don't mention, that, that is omitted from the search warrant. And so I guess my question is, why did you omit that he is allowed, you know, village code 342216 allows no more than two roomer boarders? Why wasn't that part of the search warrant?
Because there was no indication and nothing that would lead me to believe that Mr. Teakert had a roommate who was living in a, inside of a unit with him. The information that we, every, all the information that we had gathered pointed to a tenant living in a separate unit from Mr. Teakert.
But he, he, he advised you that he believed that he had a tenant and that it was legal. Clearly, he was relying on that provision. Did you not think he was relying on that provision?
I did not. No, I told him that, that, I told him that we, that we had information.
He thought that, whether you agreed or not, he thought that, he was able to rely on that provision, correct?
So he did not mention that provision? He did not say that he thought that he could, that he did not say that he thought that. You're asked, you're asking me a question, but you're not letting me answer.
He thought he could have one or two.
He did not say that. Would you like my answer?
Of course, I'm waiting.
Okay, so he did not say, I have a roommate, I have, I have, that, he did not say, I have a tenant who lives with me. I have, or I have someone who lives with me. I asked him about a third floor tenant.
Okay.
And a third floor tenant, not, not someone who lives on the second and third floor with you? Or do you live on the third floor and second floor with him? It was, is there a third floor tenant? And if he said, and, and if the answer had been, he shares space with me, we use the unit together, that would have been the end of it. But he did specify, but he did not say anything that indicated to me that he had any indication that he believed that this person lived with him.
You said that you were, you, all the evidence showed that it was a separate unit and that somebody was living in a separate unit. I think that's what I just heard you tell Greta at that time. You had never, you had never entered the space at that time, so you were not. And, and you had asked whether or not there were a stove or oven? And both Mr. Steinkamp and Mr. Teakert told you there was no stove or oven. Is that correct?
Correct.
So the whole thing that you are surmising that it was a separate unit is because someone told you that he lives on the third floor and Stuart lives on the second floor. So that offered you to think that.
That is not all of it. That is not all of it.
At the time that you requested the search warrant, what other evidence did you have that it was something that was not compliant with the code?
Hold on a second. I just want to interrupt these questions. Our job is not to question, I mean, why are we asking about what evidence there was to support or not support the search warrant? Either.
If you just get, if you give us. So, Robin, Robin, this line of questioning is important. And at the end of it, I will explain to you why I find it important. You may disagree, it may not be important to you, but at the end of it, I'll be very happy to explain to you why I'm asking it and why I think it's incredibly important.
Okay. Okay. So there was this, there, there, there is much, there was a lot more evidence that was presented in the search warrant. And that, and that information was also found to be legally sufficient by a judge. However, I'll go over some of it with you. One was the conversation that I had with Mr. Stainkamp himself. The initial conversation that made me realize that there probably was a third floor apartment in the building. Mr. Stainkamp told me that he rented from Mr. Teakert and that he lived on the third floor. He did, Mr. Stainkamp never said, I live with Mr. Teakert as a roommate or boarder. Mr. Stainkamp's impression of his living situation was that he lives on the third floor of the building. When I went to the building, I noticed that there were two separate doorbells on the single entry door at the bottom of the, at the first floor of the building for the second floor and for the third floor. So they don't even use a, a, a single doorbell there. When I spoke to Mr. Teakert, Mr. Teakert did not say, Mr. Stainkamp lives with me. He also said, gave the indication that this was a third floor tenant. There are also three utility services going into that building. In conversation with, with Con Edison, Con Edison specified that they were one for first floor, second for third floor, separate utility services going to the unit. And so the cumulative evidence, whether Mr. Teakert thought that it was okay to have a third floor tenant, I don't know what he meant by that. He did not.
It was, okay, okay, thank you. Wasn't, wasn't that obvious that whether you agreed with him or not, he was relying on 342216? Whether you agreed with him or not? Wasn't it obvious that's what he was relying on?
He never, he never used any language that would indicate that.
That's not answering my question. That's not answering my question.
I'm telling you that it was not, you asked me if it was obvious, and I'm telling you that it was not obvious. He did not say, I have a roomer. He did not say, I have a boarder. He did not say, I have a tenant who lives with me. Any of those may have pushed that needle toward that 342 section. However, he said, third floor tenant, period.
Well, the email that he sent, and you were not part of this email, I understand, but the staff, the village staff was. The email that he said, said, Ms. Mountain informed me that she had heard I had someone living on the third floor. I told her that this was correct. I asked if she had received a complaint and she answered, yes. It is no secret I have a tenant on the third floor for 30 years. I believe by code, I'm allowed to have two tenants. Now, that's obvious to me that he's relying on 342216. That's pretty. I, I consider not including that in the search warrant as material omission. That's my, my view. That was what he was relying on. It's a, it's a relevant provision and it was not mentioned at all in the search warrant. And that, that bothers me. Then the other part of this email is, he said, reading, and reading the next paragraph, he said, "The word apartment was never used in our conversation. I am concerned about its introduction now." And then when I look at the, the search warrant that you wrote, you, you used this language for paragraph, yeah, paragraph 20 of the search warrant. "Mr. Teakert assured me that it is a legal apartment and that the village had inspected in the past." "Mr. Teakert admitted at the time, this is a third floor apartment." Now, 10 days before, he sends an email to the village saying, "I didn't use the word apartment." Yet the characterization in paragraph 20 is in direct contradiction to that. Did you have any conversations with anybody in the village about that paragraph?
No, no. I, I wrote my recollection. I did not record the conversation.
No one asked you about that, given that it was a prediction on what he had said 10 days before. Do you recall him using the word apartment?
That was my recollection at the time. And quite honestly, we are now at close to one year of having this discussion, you know, from when this initially happened. My recollection would only be whatever I've written down and whatever notes I would have.
Okay, well, I'm saying 10 days before the warrant was even submitted, he denied using that language and the village is on notice that he denied that. Yet that paragraph stands and no one talked to him about it.
I think we're going off in the wrong direction.
The other, okay, I have a couple more questions for you.
And I don't know if he wrote that to retract something that he did say in the conversation.
We need to please stop stepping on each other. Please stop talking over each other.
Thank you, Betty Ann.
Well, I mean, if you want to look at something, let's look at it in its totality, okay? Number one, all right, and Mr. Teakert likes to quote the Property Maintenance Code, okay? I like quoting the existing building code that actually takes precedence on that building. And 105, permits. Hold on a minute. Let me finish. "Any owner or owner's authorization agent who intends to repair, add, to alter, relocate, demolish, change the occupancy of a building, or to repair, install, add, remove, convert, or replace any electrical, gas, mechanical, or plumbing systems, the installation of which regulated by this code, which it is, or to cause any such work to be performed, shall first make application to the code enforcement official and obtain the required permit." That never happened. That's right here. And this is the code that's governing, right? Actually, the 2020s took governing at May 20th, if I'm not mistaken, but. but this application falls underneath this code.
We don't consider the building code as a zoning board. That's not part of our jurisdiction.
It's part of the definition. If Mr. Teakert's gonna quote the property maintenance code, I am gonna quote the building code.
The property.
And no permit was taken out. Hold on a minute, Meg. Does the village code require a permit to be taken out to construct anything? Frank?
Of course, of course they do.
Can I ask a question?
I hate to say this, but you need to consider all codes. That is the obligation of this board when it's making a determination. My other question. The other issue I have is, the other issue I have is, in Mr. Teakert's submission, he said, because one of those dwelling units is in a separate structure, however, the main building is not a multiple dwelling as determined in section one twenty-two, six eleven of the village code. He actually underlined that section. But what didn't happen is, if you continue the next sentence, "If there is a third floor apartment, however, as said, the building is a multiple dwelling and a fire safety inspection is required. The fire inspector will therefore be rescinding his requ- resending his request again to conduct a fire safety inspector." Charlotte will discuss that with you as well, okay? That was from Jerry Barberio, the village manager. The city, the town of Rye is going to assess that place as a third floor apartment.
And why is that? Why is that? Why is the town of Rye going to do that?
I don't know. You got the email as well as I did.
But is, did Charlotte, did you go to the town of Rye to indicate that this space had changed?
No, I called the town of Rye and asked them if during the reassessment, they had, uh, gotten into, if they had, uh, done an inspection as part of the reevaluations that they are doing, and to ask them what their findings were at that time.
So you, you instituted that conversation. They didn't call you. This wasn't part of something that happens as a general review of the village. You actually reached out to them about this particular space.
Oh, can I, I think Charlotte, Charlotte, answer a question that I just want to say something before we go any further. Charlotte, do you want to answer for Meg again? Please, do you have anything to add to what you said before or not?
Um, no, just that, you know, you know, we had done our inspection, uh, you know, by that point, we had done our inspection. However, since there were so many questions that were still flying around, I was just wondering what, you know, the, you know, if there was anything further that I should have, that I may have missed or should have known, um, or noticed at the time of our inspection. So I wanted to find out what their findings were, and they said that they did not, uh, get access to do reevaluation as well.
Okay, so my, my, my only point is that whether or not the search warrant was correct, I'm not saying it wasn't, but I'm just saying whether or not it had mistakes in it, whether or not the, um, somebody called the village of Rye or did not, that's not before us. Let's stick to what's before us. What's before us is an appeal of the violations that were issued. Our determination is whether or not those violations were valid and which requires a determination of us of what it is that Stuart Teakert has. But I don't, I think let's keep to those issues. That's what he's, that's what he's asking us to figure out. He's saying, no, they weren't properly issued because I don't have a separate unit. The village is saying, yes, they were properly issued because you do have a separate unit. And we have to figure it out. I think it's fairly straightforward and let's not go all over whether or not certain things were or weren't properly done. I'm not sure.
I, I guess I was responding to.
I would like to finish the question.
Greta, Greta, I'm sorry. I was just responding that Doug was using that as an indication that this was proving, and I wanted to know that it came from Charlotte actually asking the question, and they haven't finished the assessment, and yet it seems to have affected Doug's opinion of what, whether this is a separate unit or not.
I only, I only cited what I read in that email, that the town of Rye was reassessing that to include a third floor apartment, okay? And the reason why I looked at it in those terms, it's got its own doorbell, it's got its own utilities, it's totally isolated from the second floor where, where Stuart lives. It is a separate entity in itself. January ninth, you go all the way back, I think if, take a look at the tape, Stuart said, well, the guy doesn't do a lot of cooking, so he doesn't eat anything. He's got a coffee pot and potentially a hot plate or a microwave. Okay. But what do you define as an apartment? If a, if a place has its own utilities, it's totally enclosed, and it's isolated from the rest of the building with its own mailbox, what is that defining? What does that define? I understand the code is vague in certain areas, okay? And we understand that, but I think the fact of the matter is, we need to look at exactly what he's, and, and Robin is absolutely correct. He's asking us to turn around and overrule the violations that were issued by the building department. That's what he's asking.
So, I'm wondering.
Doug, I feel very frustrated that you've interrupted me and, you know, totally cut me off and changed the direction of the conversation. Um, I'd like to finish up with Ms. Mountain without interruption, please, and then I'll give the point of why I'm asking these questions in the first place. You may disagree with my point, but I'm asking not to interrupt me again, please, and change the topic.
I'll, I'll actually mute.
Miss, oh, okay. Ms. Mountain, also in that search warrant, you mentioned three different times about the nineteen eighty-six application, a thirty-five-year-old application about the alienation, seeking the alienation of that third floor unit. It was denied, and there's no allegation in this present application that Mr. Teakert has tried to alienate that unit. Yet, when I read that warrant for the first time and I read that provision, I grew a significant negative inference that Mr. Teakert was doing something nefarious. It wasn't until months later, when a member of the public brought it up again, that I thought about it, and then I realized it was totally irrelevant, but highly prejudicial. No probative value, but highly prejudicial. So my question is, how did it come about?
The kids, I just waved to the kids out the window. I'm watching CBA credits.
Whoever that is, could they shut their.
So I tell them, I'm sorry. Okay.
Why did you put that in?
You should be aware that we.
They're, they're going fucking.
Mr. Teakert, Mr. Teakert, we can hear your comments.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay, it's a problem with Zoom. I'm sorry, I.
If you hit the.
Can I, can I comment now on the last twenty minutes?
No.
I asked to comment before and nobody could hear me. I'm not sure why I was turned back on. So, but I, I, you know, before you get too far down the road.
Stop, 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 stop. Greta was continuing. When Greta finishes her comments, then Mr. Teakert, you can proceed. Greta, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
So, Ms. Mountain, quickly, why did you put that in three different places in the search warrant?
The, the reason for that to be there is that from every indication that we had gotten up into that, up to that point, that Mr. Teakert had asked for a third apartment in that building, Mr. Teakert was denied a third apartment in that building, and that was our, that was, so that when the judges, who would read that search warrant would say, well, why can't he have a third floor apartment? This is why. This is why he cannot have a third floor apartment in that building.
You understand that he was not seeking to sell that apartment, correct?
No.
And that was the whole purpose. That was the purpose of the nineteen eighty-six application, correct?
But it also said that, but the, but the purpose, whatever it was that he wanted to do with that unit, whether it was keep it and rent it, keep, sell it, or anything else that he wanted to do with it, or even just put a family member in a separate unit in that building. It doesn't matter what it was for. It matters that our zoning board said that there could not be a third apartment in the zone.
That it could not be, yes, that you could not alienate that third-party apartment, which he has not done. And there's no allegation that he's done that. Um, so I'll read you to the last point, paragraph fifteen and sixteen. Well, we'll have to agree to disagree. Um, going to paragraph fifteen and sixteen, you say in paragraph fifteen, it's, it's a damned if you do, it's a damned if you don't. If there've been any alterations to Unit B, such as the addition of a kitchen or a separation between the second and third floors, it would also be a violation of Village Code one twenty-six four. Paragraph sixteen, if there's a separation between the second and third floors, but no addition of a kitchen, there would be a violation of the Property Maintenance Code four oh four point seven. So it's clearly, it doesn't matter whether he had a kitchen or not, because per this search warrant, you know, it's a violation either way, damned if you do, damned if you don't.
Actually, you know, when he would not have been, when he would not, I will tell you when he would not have been damned, and that would be if he had not separated the two units.
In what way? What do you mean?
If he had not separated the two units, he would not have any problem. If there were no doors in between those two units, he would have no problem. He would have, both tenants, both occupants would have access throughout the, throughout the unit. However, he has separated, he has made two separate dwelling units.
Well, root.
In essence, if in fact, he has no kitchen, then let's say that the building is now a two-family with a boarding house attached to it. If in fact, he does have a kitchen, let's say it's three apartments. Those are the two, once he's put those dead bolts on those doors to separate those units, that's what he's got, either a boarding house or.
Well, you know.
Or an apartment on the.
At the, at the time that you did that search warrant, you had no clue whether you had dead bolts on those doors. So I'm gonna ask you, what's your statutory basis?
But I did, but I did have what I needed for a search warrant.
Probable cause.
But you did not have.
You, you did have probable cause to know whether you had bolts or not.
I, 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 I wasn't arresting, I wasn't arresting him. I wasn't arresting him. I had a reasonable suspicion which to get a search warrant.
You had not, a reasonable suspicion that there were dead bolts on that door?
I did not.
Let me ask you, what's your statutory basis for that?
I knew that there were three, I knew that there were three, I knew that there were three separate, I knew that there were three separate utility services. I knew that there were separate doorbells for the two units. I knew that Mr. Steinkamp said that he lives on the third floor. Mr. Steinkamp never indicated that he lived with Stuart. Stuart never indicated that Mr. Steinkamp lived with him. It was more than that. It was more than.
So they didn't have locks on those doors. If they didn't have locks on those doors, there'd be no violation.
That's correct.
He could solve the problem by just taking the locks off the doors, in your view.
Yes, but he'd rather do this.
But that's all he needed to do, in your view, is take the locks off those doors?
Yep.
And then we wouldn't have this.
Yep. Have communication.
What's your statutory basis for that? What are you relying on for that interpretation?
He would have, he would have communication between the two floors. It would be a single unit.
What code provision are you relying on for that interpretation?
I, let's go back to this, let's go back to the zoning code. How you, how you define a single-family dwelling, which is self-contained.
So, it would be, if there weren't locks to those doors, in your view, it would be self-contained and this issue would be over.
Yep.
And he could, he could fix it, and he could easily remedy this.
He could have asked.
Agreed with that interpretation.
He could have asked.
But in your, in your view, that would put the matter to bed.
That would have put the matter.
Not that we necessarily agree with that.
That would have put the matter of the dwelling units to bed, and then we would have dealt with the plumbing and the electrical issue, and we would be on our way.
Well, the reason why I wanted to speak to you, and I appreciate you coming, is, and I think we're just gonna have to agree to disagree, that upon a second reading of the search warrant, I found it disturbingly, um, lacking and biased. Um, not including material expatory, exculpatory information, I, I think is unacceptable. Including a thirty-five-year-old case about alienation, which is highly prejudicial and little probative value, I think, is, um, prejudicial biased. Including misleading information about the apartment, um, where the village is on notice that Mr. Teakert didn't believe it was an apartment, that was misleading. Um, this damned if you do, damned if you don't, um, paragraph fifteen and sixteen really showed me a bias that the, the, the building department really wanted to get Mr. Teakert. And I firmly believe that the village, the state, the government has to act even-handedly with all residents. You can't target people you don't like. You can't give perks to the people you do like. And this warrant, to me, is evidence of such bias. It makes it very difficult to proceed because this is so, so biased and arbitrary and capricious, um, and selective. I, I have, I could have other questions, but I know people are tired of hearing this. Um, so I'm gonna stop now, but that's why I brought it up. You don't have to agree with the reason why I brought it up, but that, that is why I brought it up, and it's concerning to me.
Oh, okay. That doesn't answer, before you go, that doesn't answer the question that I asked Greta. You explained why it's important to you. Why is it relevant to the only issue before us today, which is, were the violations valid because this is not, this is a three-unit struck, building structure, rather than a two-unit structure? That's the issue before us. Why is, wait, wait, let me finish my second piece. There's two pieces. One, and two, do you really think it's fair to attack somebody like this for the first time on this type of presentation? If you have concerns, it sounds like you have ethical concerns about something going on in the village. Don't you think there are more appropriate forums than this to raise them?
I, I, I apologize. Um, it's, it's hard to talk in Zoom. It's hard to be interrupted. Um, you know, I say something, so it, it, I came off more strung than I would like it to have been, and I really apologize for that. There's no excuse for that. I, I absolutely agree. Um, I think it's the context of this. I, I, you know, so you, you make a good point, Robin, and I, I, I apologize to the extent that I was strident and rude and accusatory, but I, I felt frustrated that I kept being interrupted and I couldn't get my point across. Um, in terms of your first point, Robin, there are other situations in the village where we have rumors and borders. We have Airbnbs. And if the village is concerned about the note of rumors and borders and kitchens and they can easily go on an Airbnb and see what, what residences in the Marneck may be violating the code. In fact, Airbnbs are arguably not even legal via the code because it's arguably an impermissible tourist, you know, rooming situation, which is excluded. But the village doesn't go after those type of rumor border situations. They went after this rumor border situation, and yes, I am concerned that it, that it was some, it was, there was a target. Um, I, I don't believe the village should be acting that way. I feel strongly about that. We have to act even-handedly. You just can't, can't target someone who. You just can't, can't target someone who, who you, may be difficult. And you can't give somebody a perk or look the other way if somebody's a nice guy. We really have to.
Can we bring this back to the evidence, though? If, if, can I just say, if, if Mr. Teakert chose to take this issue to court as his was right to do, because he was issued a violation, and the routine would be to go to court and to defend yourself in the court, then he would have had an opportunity to challenge the validity of the search warrant. At, at this juncture, it's really outside the scope of the zoning board, because the judge found enough with which to issue the search warrant. The search warrant resulted in these violations. So it's important to just come back, because it is, as the chair has said, these violations are what you are at being asked to interpret.
The judge found, yeah, signed the search warrant based on, in my view, material omissions, misleading statements, prejudicial information that was, had no probative value. So I am concerned, the search warrant, in my view, is evidence of bias. And that is my concern.
Okay, let me, I understand.
And.
Sorry, go ahead. We done, sorry, I thought I.
Good.
Um, okay, let's assume you are one hundred percent correct. And the village was biased when it issued the search warrant and began this proceeding. Let's just assume that. Okay? Are you saying now that, that it's only, outside of the fact that it has nothing, we're not, that's not part of this determination? That's something that you should go to court? And I'm not making decisions about whether or not a search warrant has probative value or not, not a litigator. I, well, let's, we say that, I'm not going to say not a litigator. Um, I've never been a judge, I don't. But let's assume that you are a hundred percent correct in that the village was biased when it issued the search warrant. We are where we are now. You only, there are only two things that could happen as a result of that. The board could say, are you suggesting that the board determine that the violations are invalid because the village began the process in a biased manner? Or is it, is that what you're saying? And if not, why is it relevant? That goes back to what my question has been. I'm not arguing, I don't know whether it was or wasn't, and I'm not trying to say it is, and you could be a hundred percent right. And if you are, I really mean this, and I, I'm not trying to, what, what are you suggesting that means for us now?
Well, my personal view is, um, that given, given the bias that the village is acting in bad faith. And I, I think, um, based on that alone, based on what seems to be a targeting of one resident, I think, I think we, you know, that we dismiss it. I mean, that, I, I understand, and you may not share that view. But I think the only way one can make a message about bias is not to enable it.
Wow.
And the way to ensure even-handed application of the law is to say, we're not going to go forward if this doesn't seem even-handed. And it doesn't, that search warrant, when I read it a second time, was, I found disturbing. Um, yeah, I, I, that's my point.
Okay, I don't want to take this up any further. So Charlotte, did you have something final to say about this, this? And then let's move to, to the applicant who has been waiting to speak again.
Yes, thank you. Um, so the reason why the, there is a list of potential violations in the application for a search warrant is because when we bring a search warrant to a judge, we cannot just say to the judge, well, this is what we saw, let us in. We need to outline a series, whatever, whatever potential violations may be there. The judge is then looking at what we present to him to see if, in fact, there is a reason for us to believe that there are violations. So, yes, there is a violation, there's listed there a violation of Property Maintenance Code for the kitchen issue. And then there is a violation of the, of, of the code for uh, the separation of the units and a series of things that the evidence as we have it leads us to believe that there may be violations of these things. I am not saying that we are, that warrant is not saying that we know this already. If we had the absolute knowledge, we would not need a search warrant. So I'm giving the judge information of what codes we think may be in violation at that location. Not saying that this is what we know. This is what we believe may be wrong in the building, based upon the items that are listed in the search warrant of the meters or the statements that those things lead us to believe. Well, that, that is not an accusatory document. That is so the judge knows what, why it is that we want to go there. The judge needs to know why, not just because we're curious. And there is, and Mr. Teakert was not targeted by us. You know, unfortunately, this rolled out, the way that it rolled out, with a conversation with Mr. Staincamp, which made me realize that there's a third-floor tenant. And, you know, it happened organically. It was not me creeping through the bushes around Mr. Teakert's building or climbing the fire escape or flying a drone over his house. It happened organically.
Okay.
And it happened many, many times. But we've never gotten here with any of them. People have always asked us, what do I do?
Can I ask Charlotte a question?
Oh, let's, let's wait to ask Charlotte a question. Let's get the applicant to speak. Then we'll come back to members of the board who have other things they want to say and ask.
Thank you. I, I do want to apologize again for the foul language and not really asking my mic to song. Um, I, I, I think the board, if you want to listen to any advice from me, needs to focus. Um, I still don't think you've decided whether multiple dwellings law applies to this. Um, on the search warrant, as I recall, the search warrant did not say in so many words, they were looking for evidence of an illegal kitchen, which seems to be what all this hinges on. Um, at the last meeting, Mr. Donaway said that they, he needed to contact the D C E C.
D C E A.
E C E A, that's why I couldn't bring up the, um, acronym. Thank you. Um, did you?
Actually, I tried to contact, but the, but the gentleman I needed to speak to was not available.
Okay. Um, I, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Okay. Um, if I'm running a boarding house, you got two people living at twenty-four hundred square feet. Pretty cushy. And I think a way to focus this is, at the end of the last meeting, the chair said these exact words, I checked them to be correct. And I think this is where you need to direct your, um, deliberations, if you're not going to dismiss this. It, as I wrote it down, you said, it's a simple question. Is the existence of this unit, I believe you meant the third floor, as it's configured and as it exists, is it a separate unit? I believe the question needs to be, is it a separate dwelling unit? For the purposes of my application. It's a unit, it's, you know, there. So, um, as I said, I mean, if you're going to kick this over to the next meeting, that's fine. I would ask that you encourage the village to, I've asked for the records of the communications with the town of Rye. So I'm interested to hear, there's an email. Um, so I hope you'll encourage them to put, put them up if you, there you think they're relevant. I, I'm a little concerned about going to other municipalities to exercise, you know, um, control through taxing. It just seems not right. And that's it, thanks.
Okay, my last point, and then let's, we are getting off of the search warrant topic. My only comment is, the search warrant is not before us. We do not have jurisdiction over the search warrant. We do not have the power to determine the validity of the search warrant. Moreover, I do not believe we have the power to dismiss, we are not a court. We have been, an, an application has been made. We have the power to approve or reject. That is what we are doing, we will do at some point in the next, tonight, next meeting, the meeting after that. And that is what we are doing, we are not determining the validity of the search warrant or discussing it. So Doug, if you wanted to go raise some questions or some discussion that aren't about the search warrant, please proceed.
Um, Charlotte, when you looked at the unit, when you inspected the building, where is she?
I'm here.
Okay. Um, what did you find? I, I know what you found, but you found a separate entity.
A separate dwelling unit of some sort.
Right.
Behind a locked door.
Okay. So, all right, so that's what you found.
A self-contained unit.
Right. Was it similar to the one that this board rejected?
It was substantially similar.
Okay. And there was no permit issued to construct it, is that correct?
No, sir.
I have the answers I need, Robin.
Okay. Does anyone else from the board wish to ask the applicant any questions? Or Charlotte or Frank at this point, before we open it up to the public?
I, I'd like to ask Mr. Teakert, he might have been cut off before the, the.
I'm sorry. And what, I'm sorry, in what way is the building department, you're not a resident, why is he asking Mr. Teakert a question? If he wants to address the board to clarify something, but to be a prosecutor in this situation, I don't think is appropriate.
I'm sorry, we don't have prosecutors, his asking a question is not make him a prosecutor. However, I do agree, he can ask the board to get clarification from Mr. Teakert. Would be a more appropriate way to phrase the question. He is not, and we have this, this is not a court. We do not have defense attorneys or prosecuting attorneys. We do not have prosecutors or defendants before us. So Frank, if you would like to rephrase your question, to ask the board, to ask Mr. Teakert, whatever it is you want to find out, that would be great.
Sure, sure. So, Mr. Kramer, can you ask Mr. Teakert? He makes the statement that Lenny Russo inspected this apartment and okayed it. My question that I want you to ask Mr. Teakert is, was that stove in the apartment when Lenny Russo inspected it? And did he say that was okay? Because I know the stove was there from nineteen ninety-two to nineteen ninety-five. And I want to know when Mr. Russo inspected it, and what did he say about that stove?
Um, Mr. Teakert, if you could respond to the.
Yes, it was inspected in, um, I'm sorry. It was the, what I submitted is the violation and the backup to it. The violation was issued August thirty-first nineteen ninety-nine for multiple electrical violations. Um, I believe Betty Ann can send you a copy of it, if you want to look at it while I talk about it. On the cover sheet of it, I had stapled a, I don't know, four-by-eight piece of paper I made notes on, that after the meeting, that Lenny said could have a sink, could have a small fridge, could have a microwave. Then I wrote, he was here and inspected, everything was okay. The stove, as I've said before, was removed in nineteen ninety-five.
Okay. You're muted, Robin.
Anybody else on the board wish to ask Mr. Teakert, or the building inspector, or Charlotte, a question at this point? If not, let's open it up to the public. I know there's a couple of members of the public who wish to speak, if they would please. If Nina would please do what you need to do to let them speak.
Okay, uh, thank you, uh, Chairwoman Kramer, Gina Von F. If you'd like to offer your comment.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, uh, thank you, Gina Von F, the two-twenty Jefferson. I live in a two, two-family house. I stated my concerns at the last meeting that as I'm getting older, if I want to continue to live in this village, I'm going to have to rent out uh, rooms or a room, uh, keep a couple available as guest rooms for my children. And that's on another floor. So I really did some research, which is included in your packet, and I'd like you really to pay attention to this. There, from the Department of State, there is an opinion from the General Counsel on the definition, definition of family in the zoning law. It's, uh, U L U zero five memo of law. And they say in this, that a unit provides complete independent living facilities, including permanent provisions for living, sleeping, eating, cooking, and sanitation, complete. For one or more persons is a quote dwelling unit, without regard to whether the unit is occupied or intended to be occupied by one person, a traditional family, or by a group of related persons. So that's one thing that I think is very important, is determining the definition of what a dwelling unit is. The state general counsel has came up with a, that his opinion that says a dwelling unit has to have a complete kitchen, complete eating facilities, and they have to be permanent. Now, it says permanent provisions, not temporary, like a microwave or a plate. Now, also within this opinion towards the end, there's a definite, there are several definitions here. It says a unit, uh, a detached, a detached building that contains a single dwelling unit is a one-family dwelling. An detached building that contains two dwelling units is a two-family dwelling. And a building that contains three or more is a multiple dwelling. So the issue of whether or not this third floor of Mr. Teakert's makes his house a three-family dwelling, it only makes it a dwelling on the third floor if there are permanent kitchen facilities in this account, General Counsel memorandum, L U zero five. Now, I also did some research on definition, because it gets very confusing. I make the same mistake of saying tenant, rumor, border, lodger. What the hell is the difference between all of these kinds of people? And they're very technical. I found something interesting on rumor and border. And the rumor is someone who eats fair and doesn't pay for his food. Uh, a border is someone who pays for his food. So everybody is using these terms interchangeably, because it is quite confusing. And I'm very concerned, because for me, for the future, or anyone who has a extra rooms on another floor in a house, what I'm seeing happening is, you are telling me that in the future, if I have a tenant, now, technology allows you to get a ring doorbell. You don't have to plug it in, it's all electronically, whatnot, you know, it's a wire, it tingles in the air. So you don't need to have it hardwired. So I could have a border in my house. They could put a ring doorbell in their bedroom. If I rented out one bedroom, they could put a ring doorbell, and they could put it outside. You can't tell me any place in the law where it says that a border can't have a doorbell. You certainly can't find any place in the law or code that tells them they can't have a mailbox. Because I don't want their mail mixed with mine, I don't want anybody touching my mail, that's illegal. They have to have their own mailboxes. That should be and have to stay that way. And it's fine in the code. Mr. Teakert's person can have their own mailbox, they can have their own doorbell. You know, you also have an issue now. Now, this person's on the third floor, the way the place is designed. When you have a border, you are required to put a law on that border's door. If they're just from the bedroom from you, you can't walk in their bedroom when they're changing. You can't walk in that bedroom without giving them notice, they're using that room, it's theirs. It has to have a lock, and you have to provide them safe space. So when you walk into Mr. Teakert's and you walk to the. So when you walk into Mr. Teager's and you walk to the third floor, he keeps his downstairs doors open all the time. He's always working outside. To provide safety for his roomer, he has to put a lock somewhere. Now, you may also, which I sent you information on, rent rooms to roomers, and they can be multiple rooms. You can rent a suite of rooms in a house to a roomer. You can rent them too. You can rent them your den, your parlor, and a bedroom. That's in the law. So that's essentially what Mr. Teager has done. So to his suite of rooms that he's rented, he has one door that he has to provide him privacy, which has a lock on it. It's also on the second floor, which I'm assuming there might be fire code involved in here. There should be. So if there's a fire on second floor, it doesn't go up to the third floor. So that door should exist. It should never be removed. And if I were living there, I would never remove it. I wouldn't remove it in my own home for fire purposes. And you're giving him privacy and you're giving him safety. That's not the same if Mr. Teager doesn't have a key, or I would have a key, and I can go use a room that's up there if there's an extra room. But I may have AEs, like I said before, and now I'm older and I can't go up there into those rooms. So they're basically on their own and unusable to me, but I'm paying a hell of a lot of taxes now. So I'm hoping you're not trying to tell me I can't use my second floor for a boarder or a roomer, depending on what I want to have. If I want company, I want to cook for them. Because these terms, we have to be very careful what we say. And it's so easy to say something different. But I can, under the law, rent to more than one person. I could rent to two boarders or roomers or lodgers. And I can rent a suite of rooms. That's in the code. It's in the 27-278. So I don't understand why there is a basic problem here at all for the concept of the fact that, the fact that there's no kitchen up there, there's no permanent kitchen cooking facilities. It does not make it a dwelling unit, and it must be a dwelling unit. So I would suggest that we get some people from code enforcement in the state and have them evaluate these definitions and look at this memorandum of law from the state general counsel. That it's very clear that a unit must provide complete, permanent cooking facilities. And then it's a dwelling unit. Otherwise, it's not a dwelling unit. So this is what I want to say, because I don't like the implications for myself and many of the people I know that are older, my aunts and uncles, that need to rent out a room or two rooms because otherwise they can't afford to pay the taxes and live on their social security. Because if a spouse died, they don't have their second social security and they're not getting pensions. So I'm hoping I don't have to leave the village. I'm sure many people would be happy if I did, but I don't particularly care. I'm very upset about what I'm hearing about this because I've been in Mr. Teager's. I've seen how it's set up. And if that unit were on one level floor, you can have a house and you can have a wing of the house that you rent out to a roomer. And that's still a roomer. And if they had independent electricity set up years ago for a second floor, it stays that way. That's a fortune to change those kinds of things. But he can have a mailbox. He can have a doorbell. And I defy you to show me in the code where a roomer can't have a doorbell. Especially in this day of technology, when you can go out and buy a ring in Costco and install it in a damn day and have your own security system in the bedroom or room that you rent from somebody so they don't come in and might rape you. This is scary stuff here. People are trying to survive. We're losing jobs. We don't have pensions. And we rely on this income when you have taxes that are continually going up, but our salaries and our increases do not match what these increases are. So please be very, very careful with this definition because I don't like this witch hunt that's going on. Because I know many people in this village that rent, and there can be long lists of them. And unless these people, and every single person in this village, had their house gone through, this is a straight witch hunt. And I am not going to sit back for one as a resident and tolerate this. And that's all I have to say about it. I appreciate you listening.
Vinnie, if I have one comment, just, just one comment for you. 27-278 is the New York City Administrative Code, so I don't think it's applicable here.
I found some references that made it that way. I'll find them and send them to you.
Well, that's what it is. It is the New York City Administrative Code, so it wouldn't be, I don't know whether it's referred to in something else, but it doesn't, we shouldn't have, wouldn't have direct application to us in the village. Okay, anyone else want to speak?
There's one additional speaker, Glenn.
Good evening, board. Let's go back to simple. Anything that you find for Mr. Teager goes for every boarder in the village. So if you're saying that locks have to be on doors, are you saying that right now that every boarder in this village has no locks on their doors? I don't believe that. Are you saying that every single boarder in this village does not have a hot plate or a microwave oven? Very tough for me to believe. Are you saying that every single boarder in this village, none of them have separate utilities? Because if you say that that's what Mr. Teager needs, that means every single unit similar has to have the exact same. And I think it borders on ridiculous. You know, do you really expect people to be renting their homes with no, no locks? Do you really expect a boarder to want to have an open room? Maybe there is, the person owns the house, has children running, running around the house. You have to have at least a small expectation of privacy when you rent a room like that. You have gone so far awry with attacking Mr. Teager on this. And Greta and Meg, I think you should refer this to ethics board or whoever you got to refer it to. Because quite frankly, I think, I think it stinks to high heaven how this whole thing came about. But the bottom line is, if, if what the inspector said was true, all Mr. Teager has to do is take locks off the door and all of a sudden, he's in compliance, well, that would be true for every single person who is boarding currently in the Village of Americana. If what they say is you can't have a hot plate and you can't have a microwave, that would have to be true for every single boarder currently in the Village of Americana. And I don't think that's the case at all. The Teager standard is got to be what the current village standard's got to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to speak? Okay, members of the board. Does anyone else wish to say anything about, ask Mr. Mr. Teager any questions or anything else? Okay, my proposal, what I'm recommending, and you don't have to do it, is that we close the hearing except for receipt of whatever it is that Mr. Teager wants to, wanted to submit but wasn't submitted today. And we close the hearing and we spend the next, I don't know if we'll get to it tonight, but we start, it's going to take us some discussion and that we start discussion next time on this application. Anybody else have any thoughts on how we should proceed?
So we're going to discuss it next month, right?
Yes, that would be what I'm saying.
After we get the documentation.
Correct.
I'll second that motion.
I mean, was that a motion, Robin?
I'll make it a motion if that's the easiest way to just, I want to make, I want to get to some decision here, whatever it's, I have to do that by just a motion. I will make a motion that we close the hearing except for the receipt of documentation from Mr. Teager that he was, 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 was not allowed to submit for today's meeting and that we move to the next.
Robin, I have, I have a question. And if Mr. Teager's documentation comes in and refers to someone else's documentation, and we don't have that documentation, what do we do?
We, look, if you, if you don't want to take this, then we have to leave the hearing open so we can get Mr. Teager's submittal and any other documentation that someone wants to submit.
Yeah, not being privy, not being privy to what's included in that submission and any other documentation or research that we may want to do, I don't know. I don't know what the answer is to that question.
The problem is we have now, this has now been extended. I mean, we've had this, and it's got to come to an end. And I'm willing to take the chance that would ever, that we are going to want to ask somebody something based on what Mr. Teager submits to us, which I have not read, even though I know he wanted to submit it earlier. And, and I just want to get this, I mean, I think we have to move to figuring out what we as a board want to do about this. Abby?
Yeah, no, Rob, and I, I agree with you, Robin. I just wonder if it's worth, since we have spent so many months on this now, taking that straw poll so we could have maybe a draft resolution for discussion purposes in front of us next month. Otherwise, we're essentially now saying, we would discuss it next month and then, then decide the next month. You know, then, then we're like spreading it out over two more months potentially versus, sorry.
So we close and then we have at least a short discussion tonight and with some sort of a poll to see where we're headed. Is that what you think?
I will not be in a position.
Resolution.
I won't give an opinion until I see what Mr. Teager submitted.
I'd like to move that we close, I would like to move that we close the hearing tonight.
I already made the motion, so. Doug seconded. So we have that, except for Mr. Teager's submittal. So I don't want to deprive him of the right to. So, and, and Abby, just my thought on your request is, I don't think, as Doug said, he's not ready to offer an opinion yet. Some of us may be, some of us may not be. I think, yeah, and it doesn't get decided until September. I think that's what's going to happen. I think it's pretty clear it's not going to get decided till September because at the next meeting, we will spend time discussing this. And it will take some time to discuss. And we will get direct counsel, Lori Lee, as to what resolution she should be drafting. And she'll draft it and then we'll vote on, in September. I think, I think, given the time it's taken, we really need that time to do this.
I agree.
So we're voting now on the, on your motion?
Sure. Greta?
Yes.
Abby?
Sure, okay.
That was a yes. So here, there's two of you, right? Meg?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Okay, and I vote yes as well. So the public hearing is closed except for the submittal that Mr. Teager tried to submit yesterday or the day before, but we didn't take because it was too soon. And that is it. And this hearing is now closed. Okay. Moving on to the next. So I can get my agenda. Moving on to the next hearing, which is calendar number 31A 2019, Gresham for Capeta, 172 East Prospect Avenue. Can we, I'm gonna, I'm stepping away for.
Robin, we can't hear you.
We lost you.
Yeah, we can't hear you.
Oh, what I said is I have to step away for, for a couple minutes. So we can all step away if everybody wants to just take a five-minute break or we could, five-minute break. It is 8:55. We will return at nine o'clock.
Thank you.
Abby, are you?
Okay, I'm on.
Abby, sorry, let me, see if I can get her attention.
I don't know.
Everyone else seems to be back for a minute.
There she is.
Okay, so just re beginning again or recommencing, coming back from the break, we are opening the public hearing for 31A 2019, Dominic Gresham for Capeta, 172 East Prospect. Okay, does the applicant wish to speak?
Yes, Chair. Good evening. Thank you. For the record, Kristi Adana on behalf of the applicant. Also here this evening is Dominic Gresham. And I hope you're all doing well. As I indicated at the end of the last meeting, we appreciate all the time and consideration that the board has put into this application. And at this point, we just respectfully request that the board make a decision on the two issues that are before you. Right now, this property is a vacant lot, which really isn't beneficial to anyone, especially in the current environment. And all we're really trying to do is find a path forward. We believe we've demonstrated our entitlements to the request of relief. But if the board isn't going to grant that relief, then we need to. But if the board isn't going to grant that relief, then we need to know how to move forward and that's going to be with the alternative design that has 21 units and would be zoning compliant. While that's not our preference and we would rather pursue the approved less dense design, without the relief for this board, we really have no other choice. There are two issues before the board based upon the building inspector's determination. The first is the variances that were previously granted by this board for the floor area ratio and the stories. And the current application for a variance from one of the fair and affordable houses required under the new zoning. With respect to the already granted variances, these were as part of the original approval process that was almost a year long and both are directly related to the loft style design. And as I indicated, would not be necessary with the standard one-bedroom units. As I discussed at the May meeting and in my submission, it's our position that the variances have not lapsed because both the building code and the zoning code require a building permit for demolition and there was a permit for demolition issued less than one year after the variances were granted. But in the event the board finds that it is not satisfied that condition and they have lapsed, we respect the board extend or reapprove the variances. As I mentioned, these are both related to the design of the project and not the density. There's also binding precedent for this board to extend or reapprove them since it already granted them. The project hasn't changed, the variances haven't changed, the requirements haven't changed, and the degree of the variances needed are all exactly the same. So there's really no basis for this board to deviate from its prior precedent with respect to those two variances. It's also appropriate under the circumstances, given the history of this project. This board approved the variances in July and it was only the first of several approvals that the applicant needed with respect to the project. It continued on to get three other approvals, the last of which was granted by the planning board and filed with the clerk's office shortly before Thanksgiving, more than four months after this board's original approval. And this isn't like a small project where they only need a variance and then you go and pull a building permit. This project did require multiple approvals, it also required compliance and coordination with the village and completion of a lot of steps before the demolition permit could be issued. And still, despite everything that Capeta had to do, it was still issued a permit for demolition within one year of getting approval from this board. So Capeta did work diligently to try to move forward with this project and really hopes to be able to continue to do so. So we would ask that if the board deems it necessary that you extend or reapprove the variances to allow Capeta to go forward with this less dense design that has already been approved. And then the second issue is the fair and affordable housing unit. And as I indicated in my May 20th submission for this meeting, the applicant is no longer pursuing that position. While we believe there's a basis for the determination and we presented the argument to the board at the board's recommendation, we're just trying to reduce the issues that are before the board and simplify matters to the extent that's possible under these circumstances. So we are no longer asking the board to rule on this. Instead, we are just asking the board to grant the area variance from this requirement. And we've previously discussed in depth, and so I won't go into it much here, that it is our position that this is an area variance and not a use variance. It's a dimensional or numerical requirement in the code. The use remains exactly the same, multifamily residential. It's not a use that's prescribed in the district where a use variance would be required. So we think that the board should go forward with considering this under the area variance standard. And in doing so, it would be based upon unique circumstances that I have also discussed in depth before this board that are related very specifically to this application and really no other application that has come before the board or will come before the board again. You know that the history of the timing, the applicant had already gotten all of its approvals at, by November of 2018, when in August of 2019, the village board adopted the text amendments, including the FAHUs, which the village determined applied to Capeta. At that point, they had already done their budget, gone through the lengthy land use process and costly land use process. They did construction, they demolished the structure, they removed the underground storage tanks, all of which happened before the text amendments were adopted. They couldn't have planned for this. They didn't know this was going to happen a year and a half earlier. This is unlike other applications that are coming in now where you know at the outset what the requirements are and you can plan accordingly. And when Mr. Cutler was still here, you heard from him at previous meetings that this project is the only one in this position of having gotten the approvals, started construction and being told to comply with the new zoning text requirements. And the village board did not even contemplate that this property would generate any fair and affordable housing units when it was conducting its zoning test review. But under the circumstances, even though it would be a financial hit and in an effort to try to work with the village and this board, we were, the applicant has agreed to reduce the request of the variance from two fair and affordable housing units to one fair and affordable housing unit. So that's a substantial reduction in the degree of the variance being requested. And it's beneficial to everyone. The village gets one fair and affordable housing unit it was not expected to previously get under this project and the project remains financially viable for Capeta. So just to summarize the two issues that are before the board based upon the building inspector's denial letter, the previously granted variances for stories and FAR and the current request for a variance from one of the FAHUs. And I really just want to say, we do appreciate all the time that the board put into this application and you take all of these applications very seriously and we appreciate your efforts, especially during this difficult time and under less than ideal circumstances. And at this point, we're just, we're just really asking for some determination. We've established our entitlement to relief, but just some decision so that we can all move forward. Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Before we start discussion or to ask the public, I have a question for the building inspector. Frank, did you, did the building department review this application under the multiple dwelling law?
For the most part, the ICC codes and rules were followed in conjunction with the multiple dwelling law. But I have to say that I felt that the the, our zoning laws superseded the multiple dwelling law.
So you didn't review it under the multiple dwelling law because you felt the zoning code superseded it?
Yes, basically.
Correct.
Yes.
I don't think there's, I think it's very clear that the multiple dwelling law applies to this. And since there was no review under the, I mean, based, the village, I mean, I don't want to have really discussion on this. We kind of like it's done. The village adopted the multiple dwelling law, multiple dwelling law, together with all of these other laws, applies. Therefore, they all apply to the extent that they apply as they apply. So I think that you will need to go back and review this application under the multiple dwelling law. However, having said that, I do not think that that in any way prevents our consideration of the two actions before us. First, the whether or not the variance has lapsed, if the variances were granted, they either lapsed or didn't. It doesn't matter whether he reviewed it under the multiple dwelling law or not. And the second is whether or not they need a variance for affordable housing. Does it matter whether or not it's a violation of the multiple dwelling, whether it complies with the multiple dwelling law or determination has been made? As to whether it complies with the multiple dwelling law, I don't think it matters for the determination of whether or not we want to give them a variance for the fair housing affordable units. So let me open this to the public.
Sorry, can I make a comment or are we going to talk before the public or?
No, I just wanted to say that about the multiple dwelling law to make it clear that it has to be done and that was it. So I don't want there to be this, we don't need further discussion about the multiple dwelling law. We don't need to discuss whether, it's not up to us to determine whether he complies or doesn't. It wasn't reviewed, that review has to be done.
Okay. But you made a comment about going on to these other variances and I have another comment. Should it be after the public comments or should I make my comments now?
After, let's get the public hearing and then we can go back and you can discuss your comment. But my point was mostly I was trying to make the multiple dwelling law comment that has to be done. And we don't need discussion about it from, you know, we don't need to go get into it whether it's complies or not because we can't determine that. Okay, public, members of the public.
Penny Chumley?
Hello, everybody, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, hi, good evening, thank you for hearing me tonight. I just wanted to reiterate what I spoke about at the last CBA and add a few additional thoughts. I will email this statement to Betty Ann following this meeting. I did want to make a quick, a quick statement regarding expiration of the variance that was awarded back in 2017, especially around the statement that they wouldn't have had no way of of knowing that these changes were happening. I think that anyone who does as much development in the village as Capeta does was absolutely aware of the upcoming zoning changes. I think that knowing those changes were coming, that Capeta applied for the most basic of permits, meaning the one for demolition, before they were truly ready to start on the actual Prospect Avenue project as in their minds, getting that project in under the wire of the moratorium that they knew were coming and ensuring, in their minds anyway, that that project would not have to comply with any of the much-needed changes to the village code was their intention on getting that permit and then not acting on it. Capeta then went on delaying the start of any substantive construction on Prospect Avenue as they were already working on a number of other multifamily builds in the village that were experiencing significant issues. And in at least one case, a project that is still not complete and over a year behind schedule. That's the Boston Post Road at the Oriente and Rockland intersection, which we are all very familiar with as it is still not complete. Now, lucky for the village residents, it never dawned on Capeta that their variances would expire. As per the code, should they not undertake the work in a reasonable amount of time? Now, maybe they thought that they were not party to the rules and regulations of the village and that no one would notice. But they certainly took for granted that decisions made using a previous set of rules and conditions would persist, even if the rules themselves had changed. They gambled by getting their permits before they were ready to get their permits. They gamed the system and they lost. It's imperative that they are required to apply for any and all variances based on current municipality codes. I also wanted to reiterate my opposition to Capeta's request to omit the two affordable housing units now, currently one affordable housing unit from the development. Now more than ever, people in our area, many of them are essential workers, continue to be a vital part of our village. In fact, the working-class nature of our village is an important part of our choice as a family to build our lives here over 11 years ago. Unlike neighboring villages like Scarsdale, Rye and Larchmont, the Marinack has maintained a long tradition as a home for working people. Additional luxury rentals and luxury condominiums, something that this developer specializes in, are now required by law to provide affordable housing for village residents. One could argue that it is because of the development practices of this and other developers like them that the new affordable housing requirement is even in place. Capeta has, and others, have flooded our village with housing that is unaffordable to quote-unquote "normal" families and workers, driving those that can't pay a premium out, robbing our village of vital members of our community. I also, in the previous member, I cited on page 12 of the document PDF underscore SC underscore 41520 underscore letter to ZBA 172 East Prospect, which contains four arguments for the code variances that I would like to rebut. The first was whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by granting of the area variance. So point one regarding the undesirable change produced by the character of the neighborhood. This project is planned in a commercial district and the loss of the first floor for retail in this location absolutely changes the character of the neighborhood. The location itself is right across the street from public parking, making an ideal location for retail. And instead, the first floor is going to be a stark exterior of a parking lot, which will certainly not enhance the area and be quite undesirable as dead space on the block instead of bustling retail, which it could potentially be. Point two regarding the detriment of nearby properties. My husband and I own a home that's lost than 100 yards from the proposed development. We, along with all of our neighbors on the south side of Spruce Street, will definitely be negatively impacted by this project. A big part of the value of our property is the privacy on the south allowed by the river, the wonderful views of the rooftops of our village over the commercial area and the beautiful sunsets that we enjoy from the backs of our homes. It should come as no surprise that a five-story apartment block directly adjacent to the core value driver for our properties will be tremendously detrimental to not only our privacy, but also to our quality of life and our property values. And I want to keep in mind that even though they are asking for a variance based on the number of stories, I urge this board to also look at the height restriction because story, one story can be nine feet or one story can be 15 feet. The total height of this building is outside of the variance, it's outside of the zoning code, regardless of how many stories that the building itself is. I have brought this up in previous meetings, but I haven't seen anything showing that this has even been looked at or that there's any variance regarding height. Number two, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible or the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. My answer to that is yes, they can redesign the project to align with code and the character of the village or abandon the project. Three, whether the requested variance is substantial. Capeta is asking for at least four variances, which should absolutely be considered substantial. There's a reason that zoning exists and four variances is substantive at least. And finally, number four, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. I want to be clear that in this area where this is building, noises echo through this river basin. We can hear absolutely everything. Not only will construction be a major environmental disturbance, but when the project itself is complete, we will lose the vast majority of our skyline. We will lose our privacy as people will be able to look into our bedrooms and bathroom of our and our neighbors' windows. Indeed, all of the residents of Spruce Street, Tompkins Avenue, and those living on the west side of the Regatta will feel a deep negative impact should this building be allowed to proceed. Finally, and you've already spoken to this, so I'll keep it brief. The email from Suzanne McCory dated Monday, June 1, 2020, is extremely concerning that the detail wasn't, that the detail around the egress windows wasn't quote-unquote "caught" until now is no reason to ignore the code. I'm certain, having gone through a major residential build myself, that this error would absolutely have been identified as the work progressed and construction would have been halted while the demand for resolution would have to be addressed. In actuality, instead of being angry or argumentative about this revelation, the developer should be happy as it ultimately costs them less time and money to address this issue on paper rather than in the field. Egress windows and bedrooms and the ability for occupants to escape danger is about the most basic safety standard there is and should never be granted a variance. So in closing, here we find ourselves many years on, still having the conversation about this proposed building project. As I have maintained since the beginning, this is the wrong project for this site. The developer is trying to accomplish a building that is not appropriate for the location they have chosen and are asking the village to throw away the rulebook and allow them to do it while the rest of us are required to follow code on much smaller, less impactful projects, such as the one that we've just spent the last two hours discussing. The site itself is a great opportunity for someone. The fact that the historical building has already been torn down is sad, but it doesn't mean that something more appropriate to the location can't be built. Whether it's street-level retail or a restaurant with a second or even third level of housing above it makes so much more sense than what this developer is proposing. All the work that Capeta has done to date would have to be done regardless of what is developed on the site down the road. Capeta could easily recoup their carrying costs by selling the property for more appropriate development. Thank you for listening and to continuing your commitment to our beautiful village.
Ms. Chumley? Yes. I have a question because I understand what you're saying about this project and I don't want to go into whether or not this is a good project or a bad project. But I have a really, given what is in front of us, can you explain why you think that, right, the only actions we're doing, the only action before us is whether or not they should get a variance from the affordable housing unit? And so the first question for you is how does that variance? does that variance, do you think that is a problem? And I think you answered that one already, so maybe we're good on that.
Yep.
And the second one is, the only other thing they're asking for now is a determination that the prior permits have not lapsed, and if they have lapsed, then they would want them to be reissued. And so my question then is, with respect to that, because I understand you don't like this building, and it has lots of problems for you, and maybe it has problems for the village, but unfortunately, we're not considering the project. We're considering one, you know, a couple of specific variances. So let me ask you, how do you think this, the variances that are being asked us, again, one, leaving aside the affordable housing, because I said I think you already discussed that, but then the question is whether or not the permits lapse, and then if so, whether or not we should extend the var, we should renew, extend the variance on two provisions of the code that have not changed, that didn't change in 2019. What do you, can you explain to me what the problem, what your concern is about those? That's what I'd really like to know.
Sure, sure. So I did speak, I did speak briefly about that the variances themselves have absolutely lapsed. They, the permits that they were able to get, as we all, anyone who's done a project in this village, of which we have done, knows is that you get your permit and then you have a particular amount of time with which to execute the permit. And they were, they, because they had their hands in so many other pots and working on so many other projects and struggling in so many other areas, they did the bare necessity that they needed to, in order to get this project in under the wire before the moratorium. This was the very, very, very last project that made it in with the grandfather to the moratorium. They did their absolute minimum they needed to do to just get their foot in the door, with the hopes that we would all move on to other things, and when they got around to it, they would work towards building this project. It wasn't, it was actually through the building inspector and conversations of the various challenges that we struggled with as they began demolition, including putting the fence up around the sidewalk so that you couldn't actually see around the intersection, making that already very dangerous intersection even more dangerous. The silt fencing and the lack of silt fencing, there were a number of things that they went through in demolition that were not to code, and therefore, they kept having to go back and back. And it was through that process that it became clear that the work, that the building code, that they didn't get an actual permit, and they didn't actually start the building of which the variances were granted for. So that window for them closed. They counted on getting their foot in under the wire in order to, and then as far as those variances being granted, I mean, I have a challenge with that from the get-go, and that I don't believe that they should have been granted. I think that it's another opportunity, the fact that they allowed them to lapse, and in the time that they have lapsed, the village as a whole has gone through a transformation and a new way of thinking about our code, and that are these variances that maybe would have been granted two, three years ago, 2017, what's 2020, three years ago? Would we still grant those variances today? My argument is no.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else from the public wish to speak? Okay, so-
Thank you, Betty Ann, I'll send this over to you.
Wait, there is one more, there is one other person, Ms. Sue McCrory.
Go ahead. Can you let her in, Nina, or whatever the appropriate thing is to do?
Yeah, she's, she's in.
Okay. Sue, are you?
All right. Also Glenn, we'll wait till Ms. McCrory can get her audio together. Glenn, I'm gonna unmute.
Do I have it now, maybe?
Okay, yep, yep.
I'm sorry, apologies. I just wanted to make a couple of comments. First, as a member of the public interested in this, I think when we look at variances, we shouldn't do it piecemeal. Approve one or two variances, then approve one or two others, then two or three others. I really think the intent of the balancing test is to look at the magnitude or how substantial the variances are. So while I respect what you're saying, and that you've already, and I would actually look at this problem as you've already given certain variances, you already have a record, so you have to worry about being arbitrary and capricious. But really, the judgment that should be before you is the effect on the neighborhood of the cumulative amount of variances. And I'm a little uncomfortable by segregating them. You might be segmenting them under seeker. That's the other odd thing about this. You know, the seeker determination, I guess, was done by the planning board and didn't take into account all the variances that were needed, apparently, since we're still discovering them. With respect to the notion of vested rights and whether these permits have lapsed, from a point of view of a precedent, I would be reluctant to have us allow someone to get a permit, other than the permit for the building for which the variances have been granted. In other words, a permit for demolition shouldn't qualify for vested rights for a building. It just, you know, for me, that has big implications. And we actually put these timeframes on permits and variances so that we could amend our code, and the new code would be applicable. So the notion that you could apply for any random permit on the site and get vested rights seems to me contrary to the very purpose for establishing time limits for both building permits and variances. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, I'd just like to point, point out a couple of things. Obviously, you have a lot of NIMBY going on, and that's perfectly fine. People in the neighborhood don't want it. They haven't liked it from the beginning, and now they're trying to get their second bite at the apple. But the bottom line is, this wasn't a devious plot by the, by the people with the development. They went through a long, drawn-out process, which went through three different boards of this village, including this board, and many changes were made for the project. And they had many hearings where they went back. The type of roof, the use of the roof, the type of windows, the setback, the parking, the number of apartments. By right, they could have built a nondescript building with more units in it to start with, and you would have had basically like that building over in the flats that looks like crap, and they would add more units, and it would have been, boom, done. What they did was, they went for a smaller unit, has character, fits into the neighborhood, and unfortunately, between all the permits, between dealing with tanks and everything, they got into a position where they need a little bit more time. And the fact that they are willing to concede one of the affordable units within their application, but if you turn around at this point and say, go from the beginning, what you're saying is, all the time and effort that your boards put in to make this application, to make this building what it is today, was for naught. Not just the time the developer put in, but your boards, the boards here in the village of Mamaronek, this project didn't fly through the boards in five hours. This board, this project went before boards, week after month after month, in order to make what they thought was a very nice project for the village, whether the neighbors agree with it or not. And I think what you're actually affirming is you're affirming what you, as the boards in the village of Mamaronek, have already approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
No further comments.
Okay, so Greta, I'm sorry, Meg, you started to say something, so please, you know, take it up from where you didn't get to go. So please, Meg.
Sure. I appreciate that. We're going to send this back to the building department to look at it in terms of MDL. And I had sent you a comment, Robin, that normally when an applicant sends material in, we actually ask them for a zoning table. And we ask them to tell us what is the FAR, and where do they, do they stand to look at their project in comparison to the code and give us information. So I don't understand why we are not going to ask the applicant to have a licensed architect or engineer who would understand MDL, tell us how this stacks up against MDL, and help us to decide which variances are required, why we were putting that whole entire onus on the building department, but not starting out by getting it from the applicant first, and then perhaps the building department weighing in on it, and we could also look at what's being provided, because that's the norm, that the applicant looks at the code and gives us the comparison. The MDL is part of our code, so I don't know why we're holding that out as something different. I also think that it doesn't-
Can I answer that? Can I answer that? Because it's a very straightforward answer. Do you want to finish?
I want to finish, and I want to finish.
Okay, go ahead, I'm fine.
I didn't ask you for a question, so if you want to make-
You did ask a question. You don't understand why, so I wanted to explain. But if you want to wait until you're finished, that's all.
But I was not direct, okay, I was not directing a question at you. So I will rephrase that. It's very clear to me that as a part of the zoning code, we ask the applicant to look at the code and give us zoning tables, and give us measurements, and tell us how it compares. And I think that it would make a lot of sense to ask the applicant to have a certified engineer or architect to compare their property against MDL. This property, because I became aware of MDL actually through our last application, and made me aware of it, and so I did quite a lot of time looking at it, because I realized it's my responsibility as a part of the code, and we were looking at it for that application. And then when I look at this one, and so it made me look at the plans here for this project in greater detail. And there's some real problems. So for one, is that there's two bedroom units that have windows that directly open onto a stairwell, the tower, the bulkhead of the stairwell. So don't understand those bedroom windows. Second, the elevations, the rear elevation does not match the floor plan. The windows, as they look in the rear elevation, do not match what you see in the floor plan. Also, what the front elevation, where it shows doors with like little balconies and things, does not match what the front, the floor plan looks like for the front of the building. So there's something really discordant here that needs to be figured out, because there's real discrepancy in these plans. Also, looking at it, I'm looking at the parking, and the parking spaces are undersized. So the applicant requires another variance, and it's for the size of the parking spaces, because they're not code compliant. And when I look at the parking spaces there, I would need some help. I would ask some help from the building department or from the applicant to understand. I see little squares in the parking, when I'm looking at the site plan, the diagram of the parking lot. And I see these little squares, and I'm assuming that those are the supports. Those are like towers that are supporting the building that's up above. Could be wrong, but I would suggest that that's what it is. And I don't think that they're drawn to scale. So in order to understand what size parking spaces they're actually asking for, we would need to know what size of those columns are, because that would tell us what the true width of those parking spaces are. So in general, I find a lot of problems with the entire building.
Chair, if I may, I know that you had a comment as well, so I would like to speak as well, but I think we need to be mindful-
I'm sorry, I'm not done. Excuse me.
Okay, no, please.
You can go back and talk about all this, but what happens when we interrupt and then it never gets back? Let me finish?
Yes, yes, please finish.
Okay, thank you. So also, we do need to think about the totality of all the variances. So I'm adamantly opposed to thinking that we just, we would, okay, one or two, or discuss them, when we don't even know, we haven't even compared it to MDL, and we also have the parking variance. We don't even know how many variances ultimately this would need. And the one last comment that I would make is, when I was exploring affordable housing, because I had the question to myself, if it's affordable housing, did it need to be ADA compliant? So I did some more research. I did research about ADA compliance, and I came upon the Fair Housing Act, which is a federal act, and also the New York State Human Rights Law, which is a state one. In terms of the federal housing, it's at least four units. For New York State, it's at least three units of a multiple dwelling that has an elevator. Every unit needs to be accessible throughout by a wheelchair. So the loft design does not work for that. Now, that's not our jurisdiction. I'm definitely not an expert. I just wanted to send to the village's attention, to the building department's attention, if they're not aware of this act, because it's a civil rights act. If that is true, it's important, because it means that people with wheelchairs cannot, would not be able to live in this, and it's a civil rights act, so we should be paying attention to it. Although I do understand that's way beyond our jurisdiction. But before we spend time discussing one or two variances, I think we need to have, we need to send this out and get more information on this building, to know whether or not, how it's going to, if it needed to change, if it needs to be altered, how many additional variances are required, before we start spending a lot of time talking about whether it's one or two affordable units. Done. Thank you for letting me finish.
Okay. So I'm going to say something, and then Kristy, if you would like to say something. The multiple dwelling law is not part of our zoning code. It is part of our village code. And pursuant to the multiple dwelling law, we do have the right to grant variances if someone asks for a variance from the multiple dwelling law. We also can only review applications on appeal. There's apparently, that's what the law says. Now, I will say that, since the multiple, it is not up to us, and we are not going to, and I, and we just, I mean, we're not going to review de novo some law that has not previously been determined to see if it complies or doesn't comply. That is up to the building inspector. We will not be reviewing the multiple dwelling law unless and until the village, the building inspector reviews the multiple dwelling law for this or for any application, unless and until the building inspector reviews an application pursuant to the multiple dwelling law, and the applicant decides to ask for variance from it, or an interpretation or something else. So we are not asking for any of that. With respect to your second question about why we're not asking for a zoning table, because the applications that came before us do not require a zoning table. There were two applications that came before us. When we got to have an application pending before us for determination if the permits had lapsed, whether or not there's a, whether, what those zoning table shows, doesn't matter to that, because we're determining that. Second is the affordable housing unit, whether or not there's a zoning table, it does or doesn't. You have raised a new question under the zoning code with respect to parking. I don't know the answer to it. And obviously, that's clearly within our jurisdiction, but it is, again, not up to us, since it has not been appealed from, to consider. You can ask the building inspector to re-look at this project, and in particular, to pay close attention to the parking requirement. And I think that's perfectly reasonable for you to do so, and for the building inspector who's now, who is here, he is now on notice that you've raised that as an issue, and to determine whether or not this does or doesn't comply. But we are not going to be raising de novo. And I know in the past, but apparently, we shouldn't have done that. If, we cannot take an appeal until the building inspector has made a determination and has been appealed to us. All right, Kristy, and then, and then if you want to say something else.
I'm going to respond to that, because in both New York State law and our village code, it does say in our appellate process that we shall make such order requirement decision interpretation determination, in a opinion ought to have been made in the matter by the administrative official charged with the enforcement of such ordinance or local law, and to that end, shall have all the powers of the administrative official from whose order requirement decision interpretation or determination of the appeal is taken.
Appeal.
Excuse me, we have the appeal of a building permit. We don't have one particular variance. We have a notice of disapproval of a building permit, and so we had an appeal for that. And just, I don't think it's wrong, just as we have looked at other applications- And just, I don't think it's wrong, just as we have looked at other applications and said, oh, your side yard also is too small or you didn't give us the correct dimension for your front yard. We have the right and we have the responsibility to stand as the administrative officer and to look and see if this is zoning compliant. We are not supposed to look at something and see that it's not zoning compliant and go ahead and okay and approve other variances so that it can proceed. When we know, we have seen it and we know that it's not zoning compliant, I do not believe that that's the responsibility. We are shirking our responsibility then as a zoning board.
We have, I do not think you can say, we know it is not zoning compliant. I do not know it is zoning compliant. It is, and you in fact, do not know it is not zoning compliant. The measurements aren't clear on the plans. So you may have a question as to whether or not it is zoning compliant with respect to the parking, but you don't know. Second, that section of the code specifically uses the word appeal. It begins with the word appeal and it ends with the word appeal. We can do something on what's on appeal. Now, what are they appealing? They are appealing a determination of the board with, they're not appealing the building permit as a whole. They're appealing a determination of the building inspector with respect to two specific provisions of the code. That is what is before us. And as I have already said, to the extent we have previously said, somebody comes in for a variance and we see something else. No, what we will need to do in the future, if we think there's a problem, is we will have to tell the applicant, applicant, you don't comply with the side yard or the parking or whatever. Please go back to the building inspector and get a determination and get an appeal from that. And that is what we have to do. We do not do it.
We have, I'm looking at a plan that says 18 feet and the zoning says 19 feet. So I know it's not zoning compliant unless they were not, they were not correct on their plan, which is a problem there. But if they were correct in what they sent to the planning board and what was approved, and I see the measurement and I know the measurement. So in that instance, you're saying that we are letting it go by, knowing that there's, there are things that are not compliant about this and you want us to act on the other variances. So I have a problem with that.
Christie.
Yes.
You wanted to say something.
I actually think that you've covered it. There is extensive case law that's saying in order for the board to make action on a matter, there has to have been a determination from the building inspector or another administrative official with, you know, that's deemed responsible for that portion of the code. So I just would advise keeping that in mind. If we see that there is an issue, I agree with the chair that I think it should be directed back to the building inspector to make a determination. That's my opinion. There's some extensive case law on it. I'm happy to write a memo if needed. But I ultimately feel that we have to keep in line with what the building inspector's determinations are.
So could we make a motion to turn this back to the building inspector to, with those questions that we have before we proceed?
I think it's perfectly fine to ask the building inspector to take a look at it and make a determination himself and then come back and let the applicant know. And then obviously, the applicant comes back to the board.
Okay. There are, there's only one variance of necessity before us today. There are not two or three. The one variance that is of necessity in front of us is the affordable housing unit variance. The variances that were previously granted are not before us. What is actually before us right now is determination as to whether or not the permit lapsed. That is what is before us. That is not a variance. So the question is, has it lapsed? That's as simple as that. We are not determining whether there's a variance or whether there's not a variance. If the permits, if we determine that the permit lapsed, then we have to deal with the variances. If we determine that the permit didn't lapse, all that means is the prior variances are still valid and binding. It does not say that there is nothing wrong with anything else or anything else, but all we're doing is that one piece. So I have said what I think we should do, which is make a determination as to whether or not the permit lapsed. Because even assuming they are, have a violation of the zoning code to with the parking section of the zoning code, whether or not those permit lapses, lapses, is whether or not the permits lapsed. If they lapsed or didn't lapse, it doesn't matter if the prior, if they violated something else. So I think we need to determine that first because everything else can stop, you know, that takes us, tells us at least somewhat of what we have to do. That, so that can be done regardless of any other issues. Second, the second variance, I think, is simply the affordable fair housing, the fair housing unit one. Now, if the rest of the board thinks that we shouldn't decide any other variances until all the rest of the zoning variances have been, until the board has, till the building inspector has looked at the parking variance, the parking issue, that's okay. But let's understand what we're doing. So with this, we have, right, we have, so let's, so that's anyway, that's where I think we have to go. Let's remember what's in front of us. Any thoughts from other members of the board? Okay, then, let, oh, sorry, Abby. Unmute.
Oh, right. So maybe we could do a straw poll on the affordable. I mean, we've spent many months debating this now and I do, you know, I do wonder if-
Can we do the best, could we do the lapse variances? That seems-
Yeah.
Actually.
Perfect. Okay, so anybody want to discuss? I have something to say, but if somebody else wants to say something first on the lapse issue?
I don't believe that they, I believe that they have lapsed. I don't believe getting the demolition permit or the work that they did to prepare it to construct or the permit for the retaining wall was what the resolution was referring to when it said you had a year to get the building permit to construct. I think it was referring to the structure that actually required the variances. So I'm feeling like they were not lapsed. Also, I just know in February, we had an applicant come to us because his variances were about to timeout and he came on his own to ask for an extension. And we granted him the extension. He wasn't making any changes. He just realized he had these reasons why it took longer and he wasn't able to get the building permit in time. And he came to us in a timely fashion and we voted to extend it. And this applicant had that possibility as well. So I don't believe that the applicant had to wait until they were denied a building permit. So they could have come to us and extended it and they did.
Anyone else before I say goodbye?
I have a question for Frank. Frank, the retaining wall, is that part of the foundation wall?
Frank, you're muted.
Frank?
Frank, can you hear?
He's muted right now and his picture's off as well.
I know, but maybe, he may be, he may be having, you know, logging on.
All right, there. Frank, did you hear my question?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, Frank, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So yes, the retaining wall was part of the foundation. It is the back wall of that foundation, a new building.
Right. And did demolition permit include that retaining wall?
The demolition permit did not, no, it was a separate permit for the retaining wall.
Do they have a permit for the retaining wall?
Yes, they did. They did.
Okay. What classification do you put that retaining wall permit into?
I think it's a building permit. I said that the last meeting. It doesn't matter whether it's demolition or the construction of a wall. It's a permit to continue what they're trying to do there.
Okay, but they did get a permit to construct that wall, correct?
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay. Thanks, Frank.
You're welcome.
Greta or Abby, you want to discuss anything about this? No. All right, my two cents are, I think the board has learned something from this application, which is in the future, when we say that a permit, a building permit has to be issued within some amount of time. I mean, that's sort of boilerplate in every single resolution. I think we need to be careful about what we're saying when we say a building permit has to be issued because we may want to change it from a year that may be more appropriate. And we may want to be specific on what kind of building permit we want, but-
Robin, do you know, it doesn't even say it has to be on the lot. It just says a building permit.
Meg, let's not get.
I'm agreeing with you that the language, I'm agreeing with you that the language, it's so ridiculous that it doesn't make any sense.
So we should, we have, that's something for the board to know that in the future, as we're adopting resolutions, we should probably be more specific if we want to have a particular, if we don't care, it's fine. But if we care, then we should be particular in our resolution. So that's a learning for us. But I think, given that it just says building permit and given that under the code, all of these are considered building permits, it's a building permit. And I think those variances did not lapse. I mean, you know, whether we should have said it that way or we should have said something else is a different issue. Given what this resolution said, and we've even discussed it, it's just in the, I mean, it's just sort of boilerplate. A building permit has to be issued. We may, somebody may have said, yeah, they have to get a building permit in one year. We didn't substantively discuss it. It just was there. And I think, anyway, that's why I think they didn't lapse.
Robin, I kind of, I think the definitions of permits needs to be clearly defined. Okay, clearly defined. If you, someone goes in for a building permit, they need to apply for a building permit. If they're going in for a demolition permit, that is not classified in my opinion as a building permit. If you're going in to build a building, you get a permit. And I agree, we need to clearly define what the classification of a building permit is. But be that as it may, I don't, you know, I mean, Frank, that was a separate permit issued for the retaining wall or?
That's correct. That's correct.
It's not part of the demolition permit, is that correct?
That's correct.
They did in effect.
It was a separate permit.
And was it labeled foundation wall or retaining wall?
It was labeled retaining wall.
Right, but the retaining wall is in fact the foundation wall to the rear of that property.
That's correct.
Okay. All right.
Just because I want to-
Actually, Robin, they actually, in my opinion, applied for a portion of a building permit. But how do you define portion? We don't have that definition.
Correct. That's what I'm saying. In the future, I think we need to be much clearer when we adopt a resolution. So we don't have-
No, I agree. I absolutely agree with you.
Can I ask a question? What other type of building permits are there?
Frank?
There's all sorts of permits. There's plumbing permits, electrical permits, I mean, goes on and on. HBAC, foundation. I mean, there's, there's a lot of different types of permits.
Well, when you, when you use the word building permit, what pops into your head first?
Say that again.
What's the last build, well, let me ask this, let me ask this. What's the last permit? What's the final permit, building permit you have to get before you start construction? What's the final building permit you need to get?
Well, it depends on what you're talking about. If you're taking out a building permit to build the building, that usually will include the foundation, the structural frame, the superstructure and everything included in the building. It's not, you know, certain trades will take out their own permits, like I said, for plumbing or electrical or HBAC. But the main permit is taken out for the structure itself.
And that we don't have? That the applicant doesn't have?
Doesn't have what?
The struc, the permit for the structural framing itself.
Well, that retaining wall was the, as I think Doug said, partial, a partial permit to build that superstructure. It was the back wall of that superstructure.
It's the first step, would you say?
Yeah, I guess, yeah, you could say that, sure.
Yeah, but first step or last step, it's a building permit.
Yeah, it was a permit.
Regardless, regardless if they're building a four foot high wall.
Right.
Once you break ground and you start construction and you get a permit issued for it, it's a building permit. No matter how you cut, no matter how you slice it, because we do not have a clear definition in terms of building permit within our, within our, and Robin, you're right. And that, that needs to be clearly defined. You know, we, right now, that retaining wall being constructed is a building permit, but.
And the reason they took out the permit to do the retaining wall is once they demolished the building that was there to protect the buildings behind it, because there's a lot of lateral pressure from those buildings, it had to be supported. And that's why they put up that back wall right away. You know, as fast as they did, I should say.
So is it considered a part, it's on this lot or was it something they had to build that's actually-
No, no, it's, it's on this lot, Meg.
Chair, if I may, and I'm not sure if it's helpful to anyone, and I have not looked into it thoroughly yet, but there are two portions of the code that speak about building permits and demolition permits. So if you'd like, I can look at, read them quickly.
We got them last week. We were, we got, we looked at the portions of the code at the last meeting and the language of the code.
Okay.
As a matter of fact, I, well, hold on a second.
Let me ask this question. If, I guess there's, there's agreement that the language hasn't been precise in the past. So given there, that there's that agreement, going forward, what type of permit would, would we want, you know, and if we want to be more specific in terms of the building permit that we would need, we'd like to be issued within a year, what type of building permit would that be?
Can I, can I say?
Guidance of what we expect of this applicant?
I don't think that's a discussion for today. Greta, it's a really good question. But what we want in the future, I think we need to discuss the next time we have to have it or if you want to discuss it when we don't have it, just as a, you know, sort of a preparation, that's fine. But it isn't, what we want isn't relevant to what we have. And so let's leave it when we, either again, when we have it or if you want to do like we did the discussion of the process, we could just take it up as a kind of a general.
You know, that's fine. That's fine. The reason why I brought it up is because we're arguing on a technicality of that this permit constitutes a building permit when, in fact, when this boilerplate language has been on all these resolutions, there may have been something that the board really had in mind of what they meant by building permit. And that would be helpful to know as opposed to this technical definition of building permit. Because as Frank said, using that technical definition, there are tons of building permits. And that's not what the board intended with that boilerplate language. And I don't think, it's, it's, you know, from reading the resolution, it seemed like, it doesn't read as if any boil, any building permit would be acceptable. It seems like the bill, the board had in mind a specific type of building permit when they put that language. They just weren't precise in describing it, but.
I'm not sure that the building, that the board of, that the ZBA had anything in mind. I'm not sure that the ZBA ever discussed it. And if you think back during your time on the, your, however many years you've now been on the board, on the, your, however many years Steve's now been on the board, as, since it's in every single resolution that we adopt, both those that have been adopted, you know, just will be discussed, and those that we've had, you know, substantive issues and looked at it, has this ever, I mean, I don't think we've ever thought about it, and has never come up, and I don't think this is the time to ask what we, what the board did or didn't intend, I don't think we can ask that.
Could somebody help me with, I could look through all my paperwork, the permit for the retaining wall was before the year was out from the resolution, what was the date of that permit, I know that the demolition was, and removing the tanks, what was the date of the retaining wall permit? Sorry, I'm sure I have it somewhere in all of my records.
I don't know the exact date myself, but I know it was very soon after the building was demolished, because I know they were afraid of leaving the site like that, the way it was, so that's why they started right away, and if I can speak for the board, I, you know, I think, when you're talking about building permits, for this particular case, you're talking about starting the building, talking about starting the foundation, and they started the back wall of that foundation, and that's, it's still there now.
All right, because I want to move this on, I will make a motion, I don't know if anyone agrees or not, but I, let's get to, so we can move on with this, I make a motion that the, that we adopt, again, which, since we, as we've said, we're not adopting it, but my, my recommendation, so my first motion, so I'll make the, what the motion that I would want to make, would be that we have Betty Ann, or maybe in this case, we want Christie, to draft a resolution that said the variances, those variances had not lapsed, that would be my recommended motion, let's take a straw poll on what anyone feels about that, and then, if, if, if the majority thinks that's right, then we can tell her what we want to discuss, and if the majority does not think that's right, then somebody else should make a proposal, so that's my thought, now, we don't need a second, because we're not making a motion now, that's just my thought, does anyone want to discuss, or do we just want to take a kind of a straw vote on that?
I think we already discussed, I would not be in agreement with that, Robin.
Okay, Doug?
Considering we don't know what the real definition of a building permit is, we don't have it, I have to be in agreement with it.
Okay, Greta?
Yes.
In agreement, yeah, and Abby?
Yes.
Okay, so now, so I think we're going to ask Christie to draft a resolution, and I'm going to propose some language, and members of the board, let me know if this works.
Sorry, I didn't do the demolition before the year was up, because I did it last year, 2019.
Who was speaking?
I don't know.
Somebody was speaking about the demolition, was that Ms. Chumley?
Oh yeah, that was me, I can tell you exactly when they did the demolition on the project, and it was well after the year, it was in 2019 that they did the demolition, and it was in 2019 that they built that retaining wall, because I was working in the UK from June 10th of 2019 until March 11th of 2020, and my husband sent me pictures of the demolition and of the construction wall, so I can tell you that it was well past the, the year that went by.
If I could just, I can clarify that, the, the ZBA approval was in 2018, so it was, it was a year, it was in 2017, as Ms. Chumley stated.
She said, okay, but what is a month, what's the month and the date, we're talking 2018 and 2019, so we need to know the date of the permit for the retaining wall. Do we have that date?
It would have been in the fall, because they, they did demo, and my husband is looking at his pictures now.
I'm sorry, this is not, this is not for public discussion now, this is the board discussing, the issue is, that Meg has asked, is, do we need, does anyone have the date that the permit for the retaining wall was issued, that's the question, if anyone knows that date, can they please, Christie, this would be you, or Frank, if you know, what the date that the permit for the retaining wall was issued?
It was August 25th, 2019. And that is permit 190801, construction-
What is the date, Betty Ann, since we're looking at specific dates now, what is the specific date, so I don't have to look for, you probably have it closer, that the variance was granted in 2018?
That I do not have, this is a screenshot of the building department file.
I'm looking for it, I just don't have it, I know it's here in some stack on my desk, because I have all these, I hear it, this is, yes, 2019-
July, July 12, 2018.
So that's more than a year after the, so it's more than a year after the variance was granted, and therefore, if that's the permit that we're relying on, it was not issued before the one year had lapsed, so then, the only other, when was the demo permit issued?
That was issued July 10th, 2019.
Okay, so then we have a different issue, going back to what we were talking about, the only permit that was issued before the permit, before the one-year date, was the demo permit, okay, so, let's, now, we now have the dates correct.
My, my vote has changed.
Yeah.
All right, now, now that we know it was done a year later, Robin, it was over a year.
Yeah, I understand, that's right, I mean, I think that's, somebody should make, propose what they want, because I'm troubled by the fact that, notwithstanding that we may not have, notwithstanding that we may not have any, notwithstanding that we may not, that, that a demo permit really wasn't, do we want to consider a demo permit, but you know what, Frank?
Yes.
When the demo permit is issued, I don't know enough about Mamaroneck, when the demo permit is issued, in other words, if they did not have any plans, right, I own a building and I decide I want to demolish it, I don't have any building plans, can I get a demo permit, even if I have no plans for the use of the site after?
Well, as long as they do the abatement of any rodents in the property, they have to have the utilities cut off, you know, and capped, yeah, they, they, right after that, they, they could take the building down.
Okay, so then, with respect to this application, when they filed for a building permit, I mean, when they got their demo permit, let me go, had they already filed plans for their actual building, or were you giving them a demo permit, and they were going to demo, and then they filed the plans, and you started considering that, so, that's my, was this, I mean, specifically related as part of the process to the building, or was it not?
No, they have to take the, the demo, the building first, the old building first, before they can get a building permit.
Right, but when I, but when you, when I, if I wanted demo, if I'm doing a new construction of a site, and I have a building I have to demolish, I can do it sort of altogether, right, I, I give you, you know, I start proceeding, I file an application, my application is to build a building, to, you know, in order to build the building, I'm going to need all these permits, including a demo permit, and the first one that's issued is the demo permit, but at the time you issued the demo permit, you were sitting there with the plans for the building, and you know what's going on, alternatively, I can just go to the building department and file an application to demolish my building, and then, X time later, come back with plans and say, okay, I have this vacant lot, here's what I want to do, you know what they did?
What you're saying is either or, and that's true, but the demo permit has to be closed out before they can start the construction on the new house.
That's not my, that's still not the question, I own a house, if I want to demolish this house, just because I want to get rid of my house, I hate it, or let's have a, whatever, I have a fire, I can, I can come to you and file a permit, and get a permit to demolish my house.
Yes.
Right, yes.
Yeah.
You have no idea at that point, what, if anything, I'm going to do with my lot, I could keep it vacant, or I could build a new house, or if I'm in a, in a, you know, in a C district, I could build a commercial use, right, you have no idea, okay?
Right.
Alternatively, I can come to you and say, okay, I want to build a new house on my lot, I have to demolish, so here's my, so give me an, an app, give me a permit to do my demolition, but, you know, it's, it's a lot more complicated to, it's easier to review an application to demolish than it is an application to build.
Sure.
When they submitted the application to demolish, was it like, just, let's demolish and then we'll go, or was it in the context of, this is part of our application?
It's probably, this, what you said, the second thing that you said, it was part of the new construction, they, they wanted to do both, but they needed the demo permit first.
To finish, the demo, do they have to finish the demo before you issue any other permits?
Absolutely, that has to be closed out.
We have a notice of disapproval, that says, your building permit application dated November 12, 2019, it seems odd that if they had filed the permit application November 12, 2019, that this is a repeat of something that they did earlier, it seems like that's when they filed for a building permit.
You know what, I think that something Frank just said, just for us to keep in mind for the future, if they need a demo permit, if the demo has to be done before they get a building permit, then if there are problems with the demo, okay, just for us, this is for us, and never mind, we'll have to discuss this when we're ready to issue it, I think that's to keep in mind for the future, okay? Okay.
Sure.
I'm just going to say, demolition and building are opposites, and, you know, what's required is a building permit, so the fact that they got a demolition permit, which is not a building permit, I, that to me makes it pretty crystal clear.
Okay, we have, the applicant, I think, wants to say something, and we have some members of the public, and we didn't close the public hearing, so, some members of the public wish to speak, so, Christie, do you want to, applicant, do you want to say something?
Yes, I just, to briefly respond, the demolition permit, the permit for demolition, also included the removal of the underground storage tanks, they were both included on the same permit that was issued before the one-year mark, and that was certainly a condition on multiple approvals that we had received from this project, both from HCZM and from the planning board, so, they, it was definitely in further in the approvals, and in order to proceed with the project, we didn't come before the board seeking an extension earlier, because we got demolition permit, went forward with demolition, got the retaining wall permit, put up the retaining wall, and never, and the code says what it says, it says, a building permit is required for demolition, so we had no reason to think that this was an issue, we weren't trying to skirt by, we have tried to go above ground with this board the entire step of the way, and everything that's been brought up, we've tried to, to, to address, and so that's what we're trying to do now, but, that's just what I'll say on that.
Okay, um, any, I see that some members of the public want to speak, and then we should decide whether they want to close the public hearing, if we should have done that, we didn't, so, let's take members of the public if they wish to speak.
Stewart?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, I'm pretty familiar with this project, I have, I believe, the only three building, the only three permits issued on the project, the demo permit on 7/10/19, a commercial alterations, renovations permit, which is the permit for the retaining wall, and it needs construction of mere retaining wall, or reinforcement of buildings, but those buildings were the building behind it, it wasn't built, it doesn't say it was built for this building, and then, on the same day, there was a temporary construction trailer permit issued, so, I just wanted to bring that to your attention, I, I look at a lot of permits, building permits generally say building permits on them, either single-family, two-family, commercial building, but they say building permits, so, that's it, thanks.
Anyone else in the public?
Penny?
Thank you, yeah, thanks very much, so, actually, we went back through, we have pictures of the building completely standing, and not even ready for demolition as of July 23rd, 2019, so I don't know what exact date you said the demolition permit was, or the variances were issued, but if it was before July 23rd, July 23rd, there was nothing happening in the building. incorrectly put up the fence. My last point earlier, my point again, is that they, that this was part of why there's the, there's a year time on these variances, is to move projects along, because, because code changes, and you want to change, and then, we, our village is an organism, and we need to, something is approved, you move forward with approval, this developer is so busy with their hands in other projects, that they, that did not take into any of this into consideration, and just, and just assumed that because they got the approval warrants, that they could just take their time, and do things whatever they wanted, and I think that this, from my perspective, very clear about these variances have absolutely expired, and they need to be discussed again.
My one point would be, the thing that was discussed, which was, that, the only thing that, the only thing- Sorry, it's Martin A.
Penny, someone else is speaking now, sorry, we're losing something here, Nina, can you please make sure you, one person at a time, and when they're done, you mute them and let the next person speak?
Sorry, it's my husband, it's the same one, sorry.
Okay.
So, sorry about that, didn't mean to be, didn't mean to jump board or, or whatnot, but the one point to me, that I think clarified, that is the deciding factor in this whole thing, is that the only permit that is labeled as a building permit, which is for the retaining wall, was issued after the one year had expired, so, if that's the case, then they've expired, and, and that's-
And it was an emergency.
And it was built for-
To stop the other building from sliding into the, into the construction area, the variances have expired, I think we made, I think we made our point pretty clear, thank you.
Anyone else from the public, would you speak? Okay. Was there anyone?
Corey, again, I just wanted to make a point of law, you have said before that you only have appellate authority from the building inspector's determination, the law, New York state law actually makes clear that a sophisticated developer getting a site plan or subdivision has a direct right of access to the Board of Appeals for an area variance, so, I, I keep trying to submit that as a point of law, that you can underst, that, so that gets recognized by your board, the applicant does not need the building inspector to make a disapproval, if the applicant needs variances for parking spaces that are undersized for multiple dwellings law, the applicant can come directly to this board without a notice of disapproval from the zoning official, and that's in New York state law, in the section that deals with site plans, and the section that deals with subdivision, this, this applicant had site plan approval, and that's why the applicant has a direct right of access, so I just wanted to make that, I understand you're, you want to be careful about your jurisdiction, but there is a particular provision related to jurisdiction that doesn't seem to be recognized, thank you.
Thank you, anyone else from the public? All right, board, I make a motion to close the public hearing, we have a second.
Second.
I just want to, there's a telephone number there, are you sure that somebody's not trying to speak, this Galaxy S10?
Did you see it, I'm sorry, that just, just because there's a telephone number doesn't mean they want to speak, it could just be they're not, they're not, their name doesn't-
I understand. I just thought we should just pause because there's a little jumble sometimes in Zoom. I wanted to make sure that, that.
If, there are no raised hands.
Okay.
If the board's, I make a motion, so as I said, I make a motion to close the public hearings. Did someone second it?
Here, could I just speak if I'm going to close the public hearing one last time? Please, I apologize. I'll be brief. Um, I just want to remind the board of what the alternative is in this situation. I understand you're giving this a lot of thought and it's, it's complicated. I will remind the board that the zoning code is in derogation of property rights and should be interpreted in favor of the board, of the applicant. So if there's any ambiguity as to whether this demolition permit consider, is a building permit, you're under law, it has to be found in favor of the applicant. And I just want to also remind the board, since this is my last opportunity to speak, again, I thank you all for your consideration of this application. And just to remind you that if, if we can't go forward with this project, we have no alternative but to go back to the zoning compliant design, which it seems like isn't going to make anyone any happier. So, um, we want to go forward with this project. We think it's a good project. We spent a lot of time developing it before all of the boards and we just ask that the board keep that in mind. Thank you very much.
Okay, so going, uh, thank you. Uh, on the, on the public hearing, did someone second it? I'm sorry, if you, if somebody's already done this, I keep losing you. So did someone second it?
Um, I, I have.
Okay, so let's vote to close the public hearing. Abby?
Yes.
Doug?
You're on mute, Doug.
Yes. All right, Meg?
Yes.
Greta?
Yes.
Okay, I vote yes as well. So the public hearing is closed. Now going back to the discussion of substance, going to where we were, which is the, um, um, whether or not the permit lapsed. So I think four of you think, four of the board members think that the permit did lapse because the only thing that was issued before the one year date was the, um, was the, uh, demo permit. Am I correct in that or does someone else disagree? Does someone else, does someone disagree? So we can tell.
That was how I'm holding it. I don't know who you're checking with.
Sorry, I'm sorry, Meg. What did you say?
Well, I wanted that you're waiting. That's, that's, that's how I would have interpreted it. I know we're not taking a vote, so just,
I just want to make sure that I was right. That's what, that's what it was. Four people on the board think that the permit did lapse because the only permit issued was a demo permit. Uh, is, can I, can all the board members say, yes, they, they, they think that's where they're going or not, or somehow place their hand? Abby, I see. Greta, I see. Doug, I see. Okay, so, um, uh, Christie, not, not applicant, Christie, counsel. Um, you have your direction. Did anyone want to give some, um, some, um, explanation, consideration, discussion of why you think that, so that she has something to work with? I mean, she needs a basis for this. We now, uh, right, the board is likely to vote that the permit lapsed. So somebody please give her some language as to why the permit lapsed. You know, just some suggestions, right? What is, what is your basis for saying?
Variance has lapsed. Why the variance?
I'm sorry, I didn't, oh, I'm sorry, why the variance has lapsed. Correct, yes, that's what I meant.
Um, well, one obvious reason is a building permit was not issued within the timeframe designated in the original resolution. It's over here.
Because you're saying, because a demo permit is not a building permit? Right? That's a permit. There was definitely a permit issued. Whether, whether or not it's a building permit is the question, but it was a permit.
One of the thing, and I don't want to go, and I don't want anybody to chime in because we closed this thing. One of the things that the applicant attorney said was, well, you know, um, we applied for a demolition permit, but you had to consider it into the, as a building permit. But, and had they not applied for a building permit to construct the back wall of the building, I would have agreed, but they did. But it was after the fact, after the timing associated, or you know, after 12 months. And the resolution said you had to get one within 12 months.
I don't know if we want to add that they had recourse to come back to us to ask for an extension.
You can ask for an extension now. That's not the issue. The issue is did it lapse?
Before it had ever lapsed, before the year was out, it actually had, there's actually language instructing, if, if it's the boilerplate, there's actually language in the resolution that says if you need an extension to come back 60 days prior.
It's relevant because it doesn't matter if they didn't do it. So whether they could have or not could have, they didn't do it.
I would just say that plain English demolition is materially different than building. And demolition permit is just not a building permit using plain English. Simple as that.
Well, and, and I already had my piece on this, but wasn't the comment made, they said that the code, and I didn't look, that the code was, um, you have to get a building permit to get a demolition permit? Was that the comment that was made?
That you have to, wait, wait, no, you don't need a building permit to get a demolition permit.
Right.
Now, there's a,
I thought they were interrelated in the code somehow.
There's a portion of, there's two portions of the code that say you need a building permit for demolition.
Okay, so they got a demolition permit, but was there an application for the building permit?
Doesn't that go to the question of what's a building permit? We don't know what a building permit is. So, and that's what it's all about. I mean, I would take the position of what those sections of the code mean, which is why I disagree with the rest of you that because you need a building permit for demolition and you can get a demolition permit, even if you're not planning to building, that means that the, the demolition, the demo permit is considered a building permit. In other words, you can't demo, what I think what that section of the code is saying is you can't demolish without having a building permit and the particular building permit that you're getting is the demo permit. And while I think that's terrible, and I think that's crazy with respect to what we're looking for, I think that's what it says. So that's why I'm disagreeing. So, you know.
But it's the time lapse. Sorry, go ahead, everyone.
No, I, I would say, Robin, so you're, you know, your interpretation is that because they got a demo permit, they had in reality a building permit filed within the, within, actually,
Can I ask a question?
Two days before, by the way.
Yeah, and that's because I think that's what our code says. I would, in a normal world, I mean, if, if our code didn't say that, I wouldn't necessarily think so. But I think that's what our code says.
Right. Christie, could you read that to me again? What, what?
I'm looking for the language again. That's what I, do you have a section numbers, Kristin?
Yeah, so it pertains to two specific sections in the code. Um, so I am going to note that. One is about the Harbor Island Scenic Overlay District. The other is about the Central Business District.
That's the one I'm interested. Central Business District.
Okay, both, both say, "An application for a building permit for alteration, removal, removal or demolition of a building or structure um, in the Central Business District shall be accompanied by," it, it just, it goes on. But the point is that it says, "An application for a building permit for alteration, removal or demolition of a building or structure."
Well, then, Robin.
For alteration or, or removal, it doesn't have, have any alter, a building permit to construct something.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Yes, alteration or removal. And what else does it say, Christie?
It says, "An application for a building permit for alteration, removal or demolition of a building or structure in the Central Business District." And then it goes on. Um, that, that, that's all that's pertinent.
Doesn't say anything. That definition does not say anything about construction.
Right? Can I ask, I'm sorry, can I ask Frank, when, when someone applies for a building permit to construct something, it, I guess it could be the foundation or they're starting the building. Do they submit plans that you have to take a look and make sure that they're, you approve them, that they're, so until you get and look at them, they can't get a building permit. If they, they were, they gave you insufficient information or you said, you found some things that didn't follow the building code, you would not give them the building permit.
Sure, right.
Part of the process of getting a building permit is that you've done the work of getting the approval for your building. You can't just have an intent, like I would like to build something and you know, when I, when I demolish this, I plan to build a building. You have to have done the work to have, and brought it, to submit it and it got that approval to get a building permit. So I don't think it's,
That's, um, Frank, when you, Frank, when you get, when they got this application for the, for the, for the retaining wall and the foundation, did that, was that part of their application for their structure or was it separate?
No, it was just for a retaining wall. That's, that's what the application.
Right, so that's why I'm saying that when they got the demolition, it had nothing to do with your construction. There wasn't even,
Same thing with the retaining wall. When they got the retaining wall, it had nothing to do with the rest of the structure either. I'm saying, you're trying to read too much into it, whereas you can get the, they, they got the retaining wall without anything else, without,
It seems that the building permit for the building is November 12th. They did not have anything because that's the notice of disapproval was noticed because your building permit application dated November 12, 2019 was disapproved. So I don't think that they, they, I think that's when they submitted their, what we would consider, most people would consider a building permit to construct. I, and I believe Frank, from what you sent me, that that was actually maybe for the foundation, the initial part, but it was still part of the construction of the building as planned.
Right, yeah, yes.
So as of, all, as of August, whatever, when they got the demo permit, you had not completed your review of the building. You haven't had no idea whether or not it complied with code or not. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Let me ask you the other question on this side, Frank. Did you have the plans to actually review to determine whether it was compliant or not in July?
I'm not sure about that. We probably did, but we wouldn't have done a complete review until all the other zoning issues and everything else was, was completed. We may have had the plans, but it might not have been completely reviewed.
Okay, so,
In July.
Would it be fair to say that the process was delayed waiting for other approvals?
Yes, yes.
What other approvals? At that point in time, they already had planning board. What other approvals did they need?
No, he said, Frank said it was in front of zoning for various items and they didn't review the plans because of that.
By, by, by July of 2019, they had planning board approval and they had ZBA approval.
But Frank needs to approve plans in order to give a,
I understand Frank needs to. I just wanted, the other, there's this, there was this comment about other approvals. All of the other aid, all of the agencies that had to review something had completed it. There may have been many piece, there were many pieces to building department review that hadn't been completed, but nobody else besides building department had yet to, I think. Is that right? Or was there someone else?
Was there a reason, and I, I'm only going to ask this question. Was there a reason why they didn't start the, uh, foundation retaining wall until August?
Because they had to do the demo first. They had to clear the site. They couldn't start that retaining wall till everything was out of there.
No, uh, yeah, but what I'm, what I'm saying is, um, they got the demo permit on the 12th.
July.
Yeah, July 12th, 2018. Right? And they did the demolition in July 10th of 19. That's right. So that was two days before that permit expired. That's right.
I thought we all, did we have a straw vote and we already gave Christie some information? Are we?
Yeah, but then people had, yes, and so what we were discussing now was, um, reasons for her to do it. She needs reasons. She can't just write it. She's not creating it herself. We have to tell her why.
No, I mean, Robin, I, I probably would have agreed with you with the respects that, um, the building permit had to be in conjunction with the, with the demolition permit. But after Christie gave us the, the, uh, uh, definition, none of it says anything to do with constructing a building. Um, and also, and they, I mean, they started the demo two days before that permit was going to lapse also. But I, I, I'll, I'll hold to what I said before that, um, they failed to, uh, obtain a building permit wi, within the timing of the initial resolution.
So just if I may, I read you a small portion of that. I just want to note that I didn't read you the entirety of that portion. It doesn't talk about construction. Um, but I think the reason that it's, it's limited to that point is that it, it has to do with demolitions of unsafe buildings. So I just wanted to make that point.
No, I, 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 and, and I understand that, but I also understand that maybe our code needs to be modified with the, with the terminologies and definitions of, of, of a building permit.
Sure.
Permit.
Our code needs a lot.
You know, I mean, I, I, I think it's deficient, but based on what it says right now, it doesn't say anything about new construction. It talks about alterations or whatever. So I'm going to have to stick to my position that they didn't start the work.
And in terms of language, I, I would say that they didn't get a, approval for the structure that required the variances, that, that, that was not approved, that they didn't, they didn't get approval and a building permit to, to construct what, what the variance is required. Because to me, that's common sense. I, I know we're reading into it. It's not, it's not specifically laid out. But the fact that why would it take a year to build what it was you got variances for? I'm sorry, let me finish. As we're talking about that things have to be in a certain amount of time because the code could change. We're not talking about other objects that are not even being referred to. We're talking about the item that we had gotten the variances for. Thanks.
Read a section, the actual section, which is where I'm, I am not relying on what Christie just said. I'm going to read you a different section from the Village Code, which is where I think we, why I think I think we have to issue it. Section, chapter 126 of the Village Code entitled Building Code Administration and Enforcement, right? So section 126 dash four, which is titled Building Permits. Building permits required, except as otherwise provided in subsection B of this section, exemptions. A building permit shall be required for any work which must conform to the Uniform Code and/or the Energy Code, including but not limited to the construction, enlargement, alteration, improvement, removal, relocation, or demolition of any building or structure or any portion thereof. No person shall commence any work for which a building permit is required without first having obtained a building permit from the building inspector. So our code defines the permit that you need for construction, enlargement, alteration, improvement, removal, relocation, or demolition as a building permit. Therefore, I think she got, they got a building permit because our code says so. Otherwise, I would agree with Meg that it makes no sense.
Well, based on your, what you just read, I think you're right. But why was it labeled demolition permit? And why did they have to go get a building permit for the retaining wall?
Because this doesn't say that if you get a, it's, this section just says that all of the permits you get, the permit for alteration, a permit for improvement, a permit for removal, a proof, uh, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. All of these permits are, are building permits. That's all the section says. It doesn't say you only get one permit for, for all of these things. It just says they're all building permits. That's where my problem lies and deny insane.
If, if, if that in fact is the, if that in fact is what it says, then I don't, then I'm going to have to change my position. If it's classifying, and I don't have it in front of me, but if it's classifying all of those as building permits.
So if everyone who's on their computer can actually, you know,
Bye.
You can all.
I think where I'm stuck, and I'd appreciate thoughts from people, is that it sounds like
The demolition and the retaining wall were not actually related to. The request for, you know, the, the going through in the architectural plans in the first place. So they're almost like two separate items. But I, you know, I'm curious to get other people's thoughts on that.
I agree with that, that I think that, that the resolution is referring to constructing what it was you needed the variances for. And that the demolition of something can lead to lots of different projects and it's. It's not making, you're not, you're not making a commitment to build the thing that was, what was reviewed. And then you got the approval for in your site plan. You simply demolished something. You could decide to go in a whole different direction, even though you demolished it.
I agree. Okay. So it sounds like we have three or four. People on the board and that's enough. That's a majority, whether it's three or four, think that the building permit lapsed. The reasons are, which is what I asked before, you gotta give Christie direction. You think the building, excuse me, you think the variance laps. Because a building permit wasn't issued, but since we've had all this discussion about building permit, I think somebody needs to say something about. That so that Christie has directions.
That they didn't get a building permit for, they didn't get approval, prove final approval for plans and a building permit to. Construct the structure for which they had applied for the variances. Or project, the project that they had applied for the variances.
Okay, Christie, you have your, you have what you need to draft it?
I think so.
I would definitely include that they needed approval because until they got approval, that, that it wasn't even possible to build the thing. It's not a. It's not a for sure because you demolished it that you would get approval. If you couldn't pass muster, you wouldn't have gotten the building permit to build.
But that doesn't go with the idea that, that, that a permit for a retaining wall would have been adequate. They wouldn't have had a full building. Reviewed and approved at that point either.
Right. And that was after, we're not talking about the retaining wall because that was a year later anyway. It was an emergency thing to shore up. So.
It wasn't a year later. It was two months later. It doesn't matter when it was. My point.
I mean, it was over a year from the resolution. So we decided that it was too late.
I understand that. That's not what my point is. My point was half hour ago, when we thought, when. Board members thought that the retaining wall had been issued timely. They said the majority thought that the building, that the variance hadn't lapsed. So your comment, your, what you want to include about the fact that they didn't have full building approval. They wouldn't have had built full building approval with the retaining wall.
Yes, I wouldn't agree with the retaining wall either. And if you look at the application, it actually said it was an emergency to shore up. To restrain the buildings on the other side. So it was clearly was the, it may be used now for something, but. That was not the intent. That was not the request that was put in. It was after the, after the time of.
After the time, there's no question that it was after the time, but it's the board wants that to be part of it that because the. You need the building permit that shows the whole thing has been reviewed and approved, then that's what Christie will put in as Meg says.
And we'll see the draft. So.
Absolutely. Cause it's not, we didn't vote. We just gave her direction of the way that the board is leaning and she'll draft it and then. Everyone will review it and everyone can edit it and comment on it.
I would like to make a motion that we direct our questions about some of the, the M D L and the parking and any other possible. Variances that are required. I guess mostly the M D L and the parking to the building inspector. And that we hold off on voting on the other variances until we hear back from the building inspector.
Okay. The only other variance that we have is the affordable housing at the moment.
I mean, I, I don't know if anybody's going to second it.
But nobody seconded it yet. So therefore I'm talking, therefore I'm talking. And so.
You cut, you didn't give anybody a chance to second it, Robin. Greta just seconded it.
Because.
Perhaps people will not vote for it, but that's what I.
I don't have a problem. I mean, you vote if you want, but we've already told, I've already told Frank and Frank has already. Been told that he has to review this, the whole application under the multiple dwelling law. So that's done. I don't know that we need a motion. If you want to make a motion to say that.
I didn't make the motion and Greta seconded.
I understand that. And so I'm discussing it. So don't say to me, you have to make the motion. I know you made the motion. I'm saying if you want to have that as a motion, you want to tell him to review the multiple, to review this application under the multiple dwelling law. I think that's fine. I don't think it's necessary, but that's fine. But I think, I think, excuse me. I think that at this point in time, I think we should, I mean, we have been holding these people for six months and some of it is their fault. Because the application wasn't, you know, was missing things and various other things. And to some degree, we have just. Added and added and added. And I do think they are entitled to some kind of resolution on some of these issues. Which doesn't, since the fair housing unit issue is not dependent. On whether or not, look, if we, let's just assume we approved the variance for of the affordable housing, fair housing units. Although at this point, now that we've determined the permit hasn't lapsed, I think we have a definition. So, but what I was going to say is with respect to the affordable housing unit, it seems to me that. And I'll accept that, you know, and I take it back because. If the board is determining that the permit, that the variance has lapsed, then they would have to come and ask this for, which they did. It was in their application. They asked us for an extension of the permit. So. It's somewhere in there. I think in their application, they did ask for an extension of the permit. So we do have to. Consider that. So we do have to consider that now too. So Greta, I'm sorry, Meg, if I understand what you are saying is you don't want to consider anything else. Until the building inspector has, is that, that's what your motion is in substance, right? That you don't want to consider anything else. Until the building inspector has determined, has reviewed it under the multiple dwelling law and checked the parking calculations.
Correct. And given an accurate. Oh, and we've received an accurate plan for, with all measurements of the parking area. Yes. Cause I want to see, and yes, that's my motion. The reason why is because I want to see the totality of what is required before I spend time thinking about. Which variances we're going to approve or not. If, if, if it ends up quite an excessive amount of variances. If the applicant decides they are actually going to change something because of the multiple dwellings law, then why are we spending time looking at these variances? But that's okay.
I have to say that, given that we. Okay. Before we, I, I, I want to read something. I'm sorry. I thought of it and I may never get, not get to say this again. And this is on the fair housing thing and it is really troubling me and it's troubling me in this recent day and age. And I want to, assuming I can find my notes, which I can't. I want to read, I just want to make one point. And I just think it's something that you should, that, that. I just think it's something that we should think about with respect to the fair housing question as to whether it's an area or a use variance. And I just, you know, because.
When you're talking about affordable housing, right? Not fair housing, affordable.
Sorry. Yes. Affordable housing. Sorry. In some places it's called fair housing. Yes. Affordable housing. Which is that an affordable housing unit in the code is defined as a dwelling unit. That has certain income. So. We've just spent a lot of time on the last application, talking about what is a dwelling unit. And I mean, that's part of what the prior application was about. What is a dwelling unit? So if you think that it's a use variance, then you're saying a dwelling unit, even though it's a dwelling unit, a dwelling unit for. A, for affordable housing is a different use. It's not just different income. This is a different use. You have a use that's a dwelling unit that's market and you have a use that's a dwelling unit as affordable and those two things are. Different uses. And I don't see how at all you can say they're different uses because they're both dwelling units. And we're only, and the only difference between the two is income level. And so now that I've said my piece. If we, anybody want to comment on, discuss Meg's motion? Okay, let's take a vote on Meg's motion. Abby.
You're muted, Abby.
Sorry, had to happen, right? I, you know, I, I would. I, I think this is such a tough one. I, I would kind of be in favor of though. Making, making a motion on the, the affordable.
Wait a minute, stop.
There's already a motion that we're.
Sorry, not a motion. Sorry, sorry to make.
We can't have a motion. We can't have a vote based on our, based on our determination earlier today.
Sorry.
That's why I wanted to stop.
No, no, no. Right, right, right. Yep, yep, yep. I'm just.
We're not voting. We are coming up with a.
Right. A straw poll.
Exactly. So it's not a motion.
So I guess, I guess.
Right now, there's a motion that I.
Right. I got it.
I was on the, on the floor.
Sorry, I'm, it's after 10. I'm a little.
Another reason why I would like to just get the information and see what is what about the whole thing. You're absolutely right. Before we venture into long discussions about some of these variances. And let's see what the total totality of variances is that is required and we could do it then.
That's not what I'm saying. My, what I'm saying is we decided we can't have vote, have a vote. So we cannot vote on this resolution that you want to make a motion of. We are giving Christie. Direction as to how to write a resolution and the resolution would be that, what you said. So this is not going to repeat. It's what you said. So taking a straw poll, you support it. Meg's, Greta supports it yet. Do I get that? Was it? Greg, did Greta second it?
Greta seconded.
So Greta, you supported it, correct? We're just doing a straw poll.
Chair, it was the, the motion was to direct questions regarding multiple dwelling law to the building inspector. And the parking and getting the plan and the measurements. That's what the motion was.
I do anything else on this application until all that is done.
So that's what the vote is.
Well, we, but we, we need to see it in writing, don't we?
Sorry. I think I'm a little bit confused here about the motions as well. I thought there was a motion made. To hold off on any further discussions about the application until that other information came in. So that's what I thought we were focusing on now. I think we've already resolved the part about the resolution. I will work on that resolution for next.
Well, now this is a separate resolution. We can't, can we make, we decided that we're not going to adopt any resolutions without having. So we, in order to vote, so we're making a resolution to ask the, we're resolving. That we are asking the building inspector to do certain things and to hold off.
Okay, are we sort of, what we decided in our process, when we make a resolution on the application to say yay or nay. We were going to have a draft. I don't know that we said on every single motion, resolution, motion that we take. That we have to, we can't vote on it tonight. It's not, we're not voting up or down on the resolution. That was the one that we wanted to see the draft for. It wasn't for different points of order that we're, that we're talking about now. I don't see why we can't vote on this or this motion right now. You, you disagree, but.
I, I, it seems to me that if it was just to ask the, the, the. It isn't as simple as that because what is it going to say? Is it going to say that we're asking the building inspector to issue determinations? Are we asking the building inspector to review them? Are we asking the building inspector to come back to us with a determination? Or we, what are we asking the building inspector? I don't know the specifics of that. I don't know whether we need to see that so we can know what we're voting on. What exactly are we asking the building inspector? If we start, what are we asking him?
We are asking him for his determination to review the application in terms of the multiple dwellings law and the parking. The undersized parking, what apparently is the undersized parking spaces. And make a determination on whether or not they, what variances are needed as a result in terms of the M D L and the parking. And that's, yes.
Sorry, Robin. I didn't mean to interrupt. Can I ask a question? It seems like, so we ultimately. There was a majority who agreed that. They didn't file a permit in time. So therefore I am wondering why we can't. You know, do. A straw poll on the affordable housing. Because if I'm, and, and again, I apologize. It's late and my brain's becoming mush, but. That, that they specifically asked us to rule on that a number of times, which is understandable, given the time that's passed. And that all rested on them already being vested before. You know, the recent law changes. So if we agree that they did not. File the building permit in time, doesn't that mean that we then agree that they should be subject to the same laws as everyone else? And, you know, have to do the affordable, you know, the affordable housing like they would have to do otherwise. I, I'm, I'm sure I'm missing something. I'm sorry. I'm just trying to follow through on this.
But they have to by code, the new code applies to them.
Right.
You have to do.
That is what I'm saying. So if, if we.
Variance. They've asked for a variance.
Right. But they asked for a variance based on the fact that they had already vested before the code.
No, if they vested, they wouldn't have needed a variance.
No, no, but they've been arguing that they vested and that that's why.
It wasn't in the alternative. It wasn't the alternative. They originally came in, but their application is when they filed it in, whatever it was, November, September, October, I don't know. Was they wanted a variance that we gave them for height or stories or something. And they wanted a variance for, to, of, to, to eliminate the requirement of two affordable housing units. During our review, our review, we suggested, or we discussed whether or not they might have vested. Had they vested. They would not have needed a variance to the affordable housing because the affordable housing law didn't apply. Since the affordable housing, since they didn't vest because they, they're no longer appealing that application. The affordable housing law clearly applies to them and we go back to what they first filed for, which was a.
Variance.
Variance. But I think. Right.
Got it. All right. Sorry. I missed that. Well. I do wonder if it's something we could just do a quick straw. Poll on, given that we've discussed it for many months now. But if that's not what people want to do, I understand.
I don't think.
Yeah, I don't think we, I thought we did vote for it. We did discuss it originally and since then we've been discussing vesting and lapsed variances. So we actually haven't been, we've only just gone back to what affordable housing is. That was three months ago. So I would want to make some remarks on that because that was some months ago and Robin made her remarks. And so I don't think like it's. Ready to go. I would want to talk about it. That's why I'm suggesting that we pause and wait to see what else is required. Can we see a poll on anybody interested on directing questions to the building department and holding off on make, on. Examining the other variances that are before us until we get some direction from the building department. Is that enough to say some direction on M D L and on the need for a variance of the parking space?
You also mentioned about the ADA compliance that.
No, that was for your own information. It's not on.
Just, I'm just making sure.
You know, while Abby thinks about it, I won't support this.
Okay.
Okay. So we have, I don't support it cause while, cause I think we can decide these very, these issues first and we may not.
I agree.
Greta supports it. So Abby, I hate to say this, but it's up to you.
I. I'm not going to support it.
Okay.
Okay. I would, I, so what I would like to, now that we did not, we are not going to be granting that they have. The board is, will be concluding presumably next meeting that the permits lapsed. I'm sorry, that the variance lapsed. So they have asked to extend. It was in their application. They had asked if we decided that the variance lapsed. They want to extend the variance. So it seems to me that. So it seems to me that right now what we have in front of us are the following things. Do we want to extend the variances and what do we think about the affordable housing issue?
Why don't we go to the affordable housing unit first?
Okay.
Because I don't have an objection to them providing one. As long as they don't end up altering the design and adding additional units.
But we were we were discussing whether or not it was a use or area variance. I know that was part of it.
That's why we have this part of what we have to figure out. Right, absolutely.
So I would just like to speak to this, that if it was if it was in a zone that could not have afford that did not permit affordable housing and you wanted to put affordable housing in, you would have to ask for a use variance. I think that in every zone that residential is allowed, it never simply says residential uses are allowed. It always specifies what type of a residential use. It says in this zone, it's single family and this one is two family. In this one, it's maybe multiple dwelling. But what those are are each different kind of uses. So there's a broad category of residential or resident.
Wow.
I'm sorry, Doug, I'm not done. Can I just?
Finish. Yes.
So that's why I see it as a use as in the C. We also say the definition of a use is not simply a use that's not permitted in that zone. It's either or it's also something that's not permitted by regulation. And by regulation, a building in the C2 that of a certain size must have a proportionate number of affordable housing units in it. So by regulate, excuse me, Doug?
Go ahead. I'm just reading through the code right now.
Why don't you put yourself on mute? But 100% 100% market rate is actually not permitted by regulation after a certain size. It must have a proportionate number of affordable housing. That's why I thought it was a. I think that how whether it's market rate or it's affordable, whether it's a single family, whether it's a multi residential is a type of use. And I think that it requires a use variance because by regulation, it doesn't allow 100% market rate at a certain size. Thank you. Take it away, Doug. Doug?
You're muted.
In absence of Doug, I'll just very, very seriously say that I agree that it has to be a use variance. I think we all can agree that there's no case law on this. So we really have to interpret the the regulation and whether it meets more clearly into a use category or an area category. An area category deals with the dimension and physical requirements of the land. This is, in my view, this is really dealing with how this property is being used. And it's being used to, you know, provide affordable housing for residents. So I, my vote is that it is, it's use. We have to apply the use.
Okay, that's this is in the C2 district.
Yes.
What it falls under. Now, and residential uses in C2 district shall be allowed only through a special permit granted by the planning board. They went to the planning board to get it. The residential portion of any structure shall have an entrance, an entrance which do not require access to any non-residentially used area other than a common lobby or plaza. A location in design or such entrance shall be subject to approval by the planning board as part of it. The maximum permitted floor area ratio for residential shall be 2.0. This may be increased in accordance with provisions of Article 15 of this chapter for below market rate housing. And the maximum permitted building height shall be 45 feet, but they changed it to 40. And we gave them a variance that they can go to 45. Okay? And parking spaces shall be as provided in Article 8. That's what's permitted in that district.
Okay.
I just read you everything that's permitted in the C2 with with respect to that. Obviously, they can put some of the C1 in there, but it's what it is.
Okay, I have, I want to say two things. First is to me, if you are saying that an affordable housing unit is a different use, then you are saying then if I want to build all affordable housing units, I can't do that because an affordable housing use is so if I decided to build 75% affordable housing, I would not be able to do that because you've now said that affordability of units is different than a regular dwelling unit. That you have regular dwelling units and you have affordable dwelling unit. And so you've now assuming that was a use variance, assuming it was a different use, that's what you said. You've also said something else which is which is horrible, which is that we do not consider affordable units to be dwelling units like any other units. We consider affordable units to be a different kind of dwelling unit. But something I want to say something completely different, which is I actually agree with something Meg made in her motion. She just took it too far. Which was that I think we now have to decide if we can extend those two variances. And if we can't extend those two variances, then we have to, we have three variances in front of us. And then we're in a very different position. Then we don't grant one var. You know, then we have to look at all the variances. I don't want to grant one variance. I mean, we we don't usually somebody comes and we say we need to see all the variances that you've got. That's all the variances that we know now from the zoning code are the three in front of us. Which which may be three and it may be one and the one may be affordable housing if we extend the variances. If we don't extend the variances, then we have three variances to consider. And I don't, we took, we took, we separated out the one variance last time because we thought that was completely separate from the affordable housing. And based on that, we should be able to consider the affordable housing separately. So I'm a little all over the place. I realize as I'm talking, but sorry, it is late.
Well, I'm certain that there's actually additional variances. And so that's why I'm really stopping on doing the single ones. And I think that the regulation is that you need a minimum of this proportionate number of affordable housing. I don't see anywhere where you can't have 100% affordable housing. And I don't think that my argument that it says that you must use at least a proportionate of it for this use means that you couldn't use 100% of it for that use.
It's the thought that that merely because you have a lower income, you're a different use than somebody who doesn't have a lower income strikes me as a really, really bad thing.
I don't, I, I, thank you. I don't think that I'm saying the dwelling unit is different. It isn't different by law. It can't be any different. What I'm saying is that the use actually has conditions around it as to who can use it, who is monitoring it. You actually go through a board to have permission to get it. Who is who is then watching it? That's the use. I'm not talking about the physicality of it. I know that it can't be any different than the, I'm talking that would be talking about the physical dimensions such about it. I'm talking, that's why it's not an area variance. We're not saying that physically it's different. We're saying that the use for it is and it comes with certain conditions that are described in a board that decides who it is who could use it. So that's why I call it.
But I, and I don't agree that that is a use variance with respect to this affordable housing unit. It's a dwelling unit. It's the same construction as everything else. Whether somebody pays $500 a month for it or $300 a month for it. It is a dwelling unit. It is not a use. While another board or commission may make a determination on who can and who cannot occupy that, I think that is irrelevant to this application.
I know, look, I know where we are, honestly.
So how do we, did you want to talk about the extension of the variances? I mean, started talking about affordable, but did you want to go back?
Yeah, I think we want to do that. I think we want, I think I want to make it see where we are because if if we actually have to go back and consider the variances again and consider them substantively because we're not extending them, then I think anything else more comes into play. So what does anyone think?
So I will repeat what I've been saying and that I'm waiting to see with a totality of variances. So I do not want to extend them because I do think it makes a difference. If there was not going to be any more variances, then probably there would be no reason to not not extend those variances. But I see great evidence of additional variances required. Could be wrong, but until I know for sure, until I have the determination of a building inspector, I'm not ready to extend these variances.
It strikes me with respect to the extension of the variances that nothing has changed. The code has not changed. We haven't changed the height in this area. We haven't changed. The variances were for height and now I don't remember whatever the other one was.
Four East and FAR.
Right, none of that has changed. We have the same requirements we did a year ago. And given that and in this district, we have the same requirements we had a year ago. I don't think there's any basis for not extending them.
I think it does make a difference on how many variances are required. So that's what's that's what's changed, not that, not what.
All right, Abby, Doug, Greta.
So we're not doing this. We've we've moved from the straw poll, the affordable housing. We're not, we're not answering that question.
We could, we could do that. Why don't we do that? So Abby, it's Abby, it's what do you think on the on the on affordable housing? And I don't know where we want to go from there yet, but let's see.
Well, actually, I mean, can we do the extension first? Can Greta, would you mind doing the extension first?
Okay.
Do we want to extend for the variances that we had already voted on in the past resolution? And I just made my pitch for not doing that because I want to wait to see the totality of variances that are required.
You know, yeah, I'm fine. I, I will vote with that, Meg. That's fine.
Say, I have a lot of trouble with.
I think there's.
Go ahead. Sorry, Greta.
No, I mean, I think there are a lot of, we're not, I don't think we're going to be resolving this tonight. I think there are a lot of open questions. So I'm certainly willing to wait.
I don't think it's a question. I don't think we have any basis for not 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 extending them, but I have to say that one other thing troubles me. We keep, well, this has gone on for so long. You know, if we had any other application that went on for so long, who knows what would come up? But anyway, it just it really troubles me. But anyway, Abby or Doug, what do you think about extending the variances?
One of the months that we had that extended it was because we let them go back and argue the vested rights.
I understand there's a lot of reasons for why it got got extended. I'm not saying it's it's all their fault. Some it's our fault. Some it's their fault. It wasn't, you know, it wasn't like they did the, you know, everything there. They, some of this was gotten missed, but it doesn't matter. At this point, I think, I think that's the question. Let's move on from what it is.
Hasn't it changed? Hasn't there been some changes in the law? Hasn't the height changed or am I wrong?
We gave them a very, the only thing that changed was the number of stories and we gave them a variance for that in January. So the height and the.
The height changed and we gave them the variance for.
Oh, I was backwards. The number of stories didn't change. And we had a, sorry, I had it backwards. We gave them a variance for the one thing that had changed.
Robin, I will support your position. We should extend them. Then that is changed. You know, you want to find out about the multiple dwelling law? Well, great. But, you know, the application can change at all.
Abby, are you there?
Yeah, no, I'm here.
We're not voting tonight. So, you know, you have some thoughts and then and then when you read it, whichever way it goes tonight, you could say, you know what, I've had further thoughts when it's not 11 o'clock at night and.
You can change your mind.
Right, but we need, we need to give, we need to give Christie some direction is really what we're looking for. That you think is right.
Specifically the very, right. And and can can someone refresh me on the three variances we're specifically talking about extending here? Is this the?
Two variances.
Okay. Two, okay.
It's a variance.
It's three. It's the affordable housing FAR and the floors, isn't it?
Affordable housing is not being extended. Well, she's asking about what we're extending, only extending or not extending. We have to decide to, they had two variances before. There are three physical things that we know are inconsistent with the code. One is the height, one is the number of stories and one is the FAR. In last year, whenever it was 2018, we gave them a variance for the number of stories and the FAR. The code, it's the same number of stories and the same FAR. The only change in the code on that portion or with respect to sort of bulk was with respect to the height. And we gave them a variance for height in January. We didn't. I mean, I think we didn't, so the two that we either are or are not extending now are the variance with respect to the height. The number of stories and the FAR.
Right.
Okay, so I'll agree to extend those two. I'm not going to agree to extend. Yeah.
There's nothing else to extend.
Extend those two. Okay, good.
Okay, so Christie, the direction on that would be to a variance to approve the, approve an extension of the variance. Now, assuming we're approving the extension of the variance, what do they have to do with it? What do they have to do? What's it conditioned on? Do we want, we can make that last? There's nothing that says a year is magic. Do we want to give them six months to get a permit that allows for construction of the building?
I don't want to push it out to a year.
No, so as I said, six months that allows for the construction of the building.
Why? Why don't you make it 90 days?
Is that, is that practical? Is that practically enough time? I don't know the answer from a.
Frank, is that practically enough time?
We're actually, we're considering that there might be some other variances. 90 days might kind of get if there we do find that we we have to ask them to notice and do something else that could be problematic. I think something more like six months is a.
I wouldn't go for longer than six months. It's been a long time. Let's not.
But, well, the way they're speaking, they want to get moving on this project. It's costing them a lot of money. It shouldn't be a problem if you take them at their word.
Okay, so six months. So six, they have to get a permit that a building permit that allows for construction of the building. The whole building has approved by the variances. Okay, now.
Multi-residential dwelling. How's about that that we specify? It's a multi-residential.
What do you mean specify what?
You said to to build the building and I just thought that was a little general.
Well, that's a general. They, they have an application. We gave them a variance for an application based a project. It's the project that they're applying for.
Okay, I was just trying to be a little more specific.
I don't want to, I don't know. I don't know what a multifamily residential means. Is it multifamily?
I said a multi, well, I'm, it's a legally, it's a multi-dwelling, a multi-dwelling structure that they got approved for.
Multiple dwelling.
It is a, it is a development they got approved for. Okay, just like the other developments that got approved in this village with the multiple dwelling law in effect for the years it's been in.
I wasn't trying to be difficult. I was simply trying to be a little more specific about what was going to get done. I don't really have a.
Plans we saw. It is the plans we saw. All we're doing, we granted, and so make it, this should be, we granted the variances based on plans. In fact, if it turns out that those plans are not valid, they would have to come back to us.
Right, but we saw plans for landscaping. We saw plans for the parking garage. We saw plans for different things. I was just trying to say that.
Plan that was part of the original application that was granted in 2018. And that is the, it is that plan and that variance. That's the plan. We're not giving them a different plan. It is a plan that they showed to us in 2018.
Frank?
Yeah.
Yes.
They submit a perforated set.
A perforated set? What do you mean by that?
Final design, final approved. You guys looked at it. You guys approved it. You issued it to them and say, yeah, you can build this.
We haven't done that yet, no.
Right, okay, so.
Wait, wait, well, all right, wait. Now I'm getting into the confusion mark here. Okay.
They don't have an approved plan yet, otherwise they wouldn't be here.
But they don't have a set of approved construction drawings. Frank hasn't issued them.
Well, we have plans that were attached, just like we always do. When we approve a variance, we don't have final construction drawings because he issues the injunction.
I, I, I understand, Robin, I understand. But the fact of the matter is, they're going to have to build and start construction after they receive the approved set of plans from the building department. Do you have a set in there for review, Frank?
We have a set for review, but it's not stamped. We haven't stamped the final, you know, approved.
No, I understand. I understand. I just need to know if you have the final design set for you to review.
We have the design set, yeah, yes.
Okay, okay. All right, six months.
Okay, so the final one is the, but, but, but remember what we are doing is we're just extending the variance. The variance that we granted in 2018 was based on a set of plans that were issued in 2018. I'm sorry, not that we issued, that were attached to the application in 2018. All we're doing is extending that variance on those plans. And that variance says, which I don't, I closed it now, says as they always do, that it's got to be in substantial compliance with those plans. And if it turns out that Frank reviews it and there's a problem with those plans, there's a problem with the, then they can't. So, um, okay, now the affordable housing.
I don't have an issue with it.
So we're actually going to talk about whether it's use an area and then whatever user areas it is, we have to decide whether we would approve it or not. We got.
Well, I think, I think they applied for an area variance.
And I think they're right.
So the question that we have to say is if we think it's a use variance, then we would turn them down because we think it's an, because it's an area. If we think it's a use variance, we'd have to deny their area variance application.
Well, I would deny the area variance application as well because I think that the detriment to the community is greater than the benefit to the applicant. So I would not approve, even on an area variance, I would not approve the exemption from the two affordable houses.
Me too. I agree.
No area variance. That's what you're saying, Abby, right?
Uh, yeah, I agree with Meg that even if it was an area variance, which I, you know, I'm, I'm struggling, yeah. Which I'm not saying it is because I think it's a very complicated issue that even if it was an area variance, I would not approve it.
Okay, so there are three votes to deny it. Greta, go ahead.
We deny it without, did we deny it without making a determination whether it's rightfully an area or use variance?
No, they applied for an area variance. So in our grounds for denial, you can deny it without saying anything about where I think. Christie, unless you disagree, I think since they applied for an area variance, we could deny it because what were the reasons Meg just said, for example, because she thinks it's whatever she just said, I'm sorry. Whatever Meg just said, we're not based on.
Outweighed the detriment to the.
Right, so it could be denied on that, you know, so why?
I think it's important that we. Well, but I don't, but, but what we don't want to fall in the trap of by denying it on that, that we're then saying it is an area variance, right?
So we can say that we can make a determination on both. You can do that, whatever you want.
Yeah, you can essentially decide to vote on whether you feel it's an area variance or not. If you don't feel like it's an area variance, you can deny it. And then if you, in the alternative, you vote on whether you think it's an area variance or not.
So I guess the first vote is.
Down the area variance and say that we're absolutely, actually not even sure whether it qualifies as an area or use. I'm thinking that we cannot do that, but I.
Yeah, I, I, I would do one or the other.
So we have to determine if it's a use or an area variance.
I mean, also, I, I believe that the applicant, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, and this may be what you're voting on. But I think the applicant came back and agreed to one unit. But again, that's.
Yes, they did agree to one unit.
So if we're going to turn down an area variance, we have to give the findings as either it didn't meet the balancing test for the area variance or we're denying it because we feel it's a use variance and not an area variance. We can't have it both ways when we're denying it.
Yeah, I think, no, I, I.
Well, wait, can I ask a question? What happens if denying the area variance is more detrimental to the nearby properties than granting it?
Then you shouldn't do it because the balancing test says you granted if the, right, that's what the balancing test is about.
As of right, they have the right to put 21 there. As of right. So isn't it more detrimental if you don't look at it as an area variance and grant it for the one unit? Because isn't that more detrimental? 21 units in lieu of 18? I'm just.
I don't, I don't understand that, Doug.
Yeah.
He's saying that if you deny the area variance, if we deny the variance, then they're going to have, they're going to build the 21 as of right units that doesn't need any, that doesn't need any variance. And whether or not 21 units is worse than the 18 units they'd be building with this plan.
I think, I think the impact would be more in what the building will look like external and how much bigger it will be. And how, how it's going to be plain. And I think that's worse for, that's more detrimental to the neighborhood than going with an area variance and going with a better looking building. I, it's up to you guys. You talk about that.
Affordable housing, I think affordable housing is really important. It outweighs the other things.
Okay.
Yeah, they conceded one.
I understand, Doug.
I just want to clarify something that Christie said because I was a little confused, Christie, by what you said. And I want to make sure that, that what you said is that if, do we, do we have to, we can deny, we can, we can deny the variance, an area variance on the basis of findings. Are you saying we also have to determine whether it's an, that we first have to determine if it's an area or use variance?
No, no, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying you can do either or.
Right, that's what I, that's what I said. Yes, that's what I. Okay, but, but I say.
We don't have, we don't have to make a determination whether it's a use or an area.
Except.
We could deny, we could.
Except that the applicant has applied for the area variance. So that's what we have to determine is are we approving what the applicant applied for? So in the findings of that, we will have to say whether we're doing it because it didn't meet the balancing tests. Or are we doing that because we think it doesn't qualify as an area variance? They really need a use.
Can we say that, can, if we want to punt it, can we punt it and say, and what we'd have to be explicit and say, when, we don't need to make a determination whether it's a use or area variance because it doesn't even meet the standard of an area. And in that way, we're not creating precedent. Can we do that?
I think that's what, I think Christie agrees that we could do that.
That sounds good.
Is that right, Christie? We can do that?
Can you say it again? Just one more time. I'm sorry, it is a little late.
Okay, sure. That we can make a finding, a determination, a statement that we at this time do not have to make a determination whether it's a use or area variance because it doesn't even meet these threshold of requirements of the balancing test for an area. So we're punting on the use versus the area and we're saying that explicitly. So there's no precedental value.
I just, I guess I don't see why. I guess I just don't see why you wouldn't then just vote whether or not it's an area variance.
I don't see why we have to say anything about the use versus, if they apply for an area variance, we can just.
I, I don't want, I, I think we do because I don't want it to be an implicit precedent. And I, I, I feel strongly, I, you know, that it is a use variance and that it's inappropriate as an area variance, variance. It doesn't meet the definition of an area variance. And so if we're going to do that, I want the record to be clear that we're not saying that it's an area variance. We're just basically punting on the issue.
I think you can put, sorry, go ahead.
I actually don't think we can. I think if we vote, I think, I think Greg is, Greg, Greg, that was a combination of Greta and Meg. I think Greta is right that if we vote on it as an area variance, we're implicitly saying it is an area variance. While I think it is an area variance, I'm not sure that's what the board all wants to say. So I think Greta is right that we, that we, I think we actually have to make a decision because I don't see how, once we vote on an area variance, we are saying we can consider an area variance. So if we can consider an area variance, we're saying it's an area variance. So I think we do have to make the determination.
I, I do actually agree. When you break it down that way, I think you're right that if you don't want to set a precedent as to what qualifies as an area variance and whether something along these lines qualifies as an area variance, then you should vote on whether you believe it's a use or an area variance.
Okay, so I think, and so somebody's going to do this, I think it's an area variance, whether or not we grant or deny, we'll leave that as a separate motion. But I think it's an area variance. Now, I would grant the area variance, but since I know other members of the board would deny an area variance, I think if someone thinks that it is an area variance and would deny it, I think that should be the motion if that's what. So, so we have three possible, we have two possible choice, choices here that we could vote on. And let's take a, one, it is an area variance and we grant the area variance. It is an area variance and we deny the area variance or it is the use variance. And they didn't apply for that, so we have to deny this. Those are the three possible outcomes that we can have. My, my view would be it is an area variance and we should grant it. Meg, I think your view would be that it is a use variance and therefore it has to be denied. Is that correct?
This is difficult.
Okay, so we can, we could think, Greta, so I'm trying to get a straw poll to give some direction here to, to, to Christie. So of those three choices, right, it is an area variance and we should grant it. It is an area variance and we should deny it or it is a use variance and therefore we have to deny the area variance. I want to go for one. Meg hasn't decided. Doug, what do you want to do?
Area variance and granted.
Okay, that's two for that. Greta, make your thinking. Greta, what do you think?
I'm use, I'm use, which means deny.
Right, okay, and also, and, and Meg, what did you think? Did you come to a conclusion?
Because I want to move this forward and because I can see how problematic it is for people to consider this a use variance.
That's going to create precedent.
I'm encouraged by that there are some members who understand the beneficial, benefit of affordable housing. It's a.
I think affordable housing is wonderful.
It's really.
You have a lot more affordable housing. That's not the issue here, so.
No, 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 but that, but that people will consider it as a beneficial use when weighing it against what the applicant requires or asking for.
So what is your, so what did that take you?
Okay, I'm going to change, I'm going to make a motion.
No, we're just not making motions. We're just.
You're not making a motion where I'm considering how I would vote, how I would see this is to deny it as an area variance because it, it, the beneficial use of the community or affordable housing outweighs what the, what the applicant needs.
Okay, so you would consider it an area variance but deny it. Okay, Abby?
Um. I, I'm worried about the precedent, like, like Greta. I, I just can't see how it's an area variance when the, when the area isn't changing, but I, I struggle with use too. I don't feel like it fits in either box. So I'm really struggling with this. And I really, I guess I would deny it ultimately on, I, I guess.
Robin or Christie, can I make, ask a question? This is just a way out of the park question. And it won't happen for this application. I realize that has nothing to do with this application. Is it possible for the trustees and their legislation to put something into, when they write the legislation as to what kind of relief you could get or what would be if you wanted to ask for something? Could there be more information in the code for applicants? Because I know generally when we have legislation, there is a relief valve, there's ways to consider things and that's what variances are, are, are used for. And we're having trouble thinking that it doesn't fit in the use box, doesn't fit in the area box, it's somewhere else. Is there something about this that could possibly be, I, I'm sorry, it's not about our vote tonight, so I was just.
Yeah, the answer to the question is they could, they couldn't really say it is, whether it's an area or whether its use is really sort of a determination of law. I mean, I don't think the trustees could have done something, but for example, they could have said, and I say this because New York City does this, you have mandatory affordable housing in the city, but there is a provision for certain relief. They wrote a special relief provision, like a hardship provision. So there is a provision to get for some relief from the mandatory affordable housing. So the trustees could have put some kind of, I don't think they could have said.
No, I think that they would say it was area or use. No, I wonder if they could put relief, make it a really high bar for relief or something, but because it just gives that normally in a code, you have some way of, of asking for some relief on something.
Well, if, let me, let me go this way. If they put in fair market rate housing, okay, the floor area ratio, the planning board can change the floor area ratio. It can be increased with provisions of Article 15. So they do have, and this is in the C2 district. So they are getting, they do get to take advantage of a better floor area ratio if they put affordable housing in.
Abby, so Abby would, Abby, you haven't decided, right? How you want it to go? Because we need to get.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, everyone. I'm, I'm really, I'm so stuck on this. But I, I, no, I don't want to post. I know we've got to move on. I, you know, I think, I think I'm going to come down on the side of, of, of use.
Okay, so you were, so going back to Greta, I'm sorry, so Greta and you think it's a use variance and therefore the area variance is denied. Meg, I'm coming back to you now because both Doug and I think it's an area variance.
Whether I deny it as a use or an area, I'm right in the gray area. So I will, I will go with, with.
Okay, Christie, so, so Christie, you have direction on this, which is to deny this, deny the area variance because it is, it should be a use variance.
Okay, yes, that's fine.
Have we solved all these issues now? Are we done with them?
I think so.
Yes.
Okay.
So it's us, us, some, whatever it is, some.
We did raise three. Three of three want that and two want the other. So she's going to draft it and then next time.
No, 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 I want to go back that we did not agree to direct things to the building department and not look at things. So that went off the table. I would like to make, that the board would like to direct this or determination on MDL and the parking lot that we all decide we want to do that and it's not contingent upon anything else. Can we decide that we are directing this back to the building department for information on that? Or is that a decision we have to do together?
I don't think we need to have to do it together, but we could do it together. But I already told, I mean, we already told the building. I don't think we need to have to do it together, but we could do it together, but I already told, I mean, we already told the building inspector.
Yeah, we need to.
Of the multiple dwelling law, he's already gonna do that.
I understand, but I just meant to put some time limit like we would like it.
We can't put a time limit, we don't know how long it's gonna take, if he's got, we, I don't know that we can give him a time limit. I don't know how complicated this is on this particular, I mean, the multiple dwelling law is very complicated, it isn't as simple as light and air. There are room sizes, there are dimensions with respect to distances, there are um all kinds of standards with respect to ventilation and all kinds of things. We don't know, so I don't know whether he can, whether we could, would be reasonable to give him a time.
And I would say that the uh multiple dwellings law says that um, or the portion of the code that we've adopted essentially says that uh the building inspector is charged with enforcement of the multiple dwelling law. So I, I really don't think it's fair for us to put a time limit on it.
But our, our New York State Consolidated Law says that we are the ones who can give variances for it, so it does fall under our jurisdiction to.
It does for the variance, once he's made a determination, but I don't think that you can put a turn, a time limit on his determination. I mean, he's truly the one that's in charge of enforcing it, so um I'm just throwing it out there that I, I, I don't think it's reasonable to put that, that time limit on him.
Okay, do we want to take, uh, uh, make a moment, ask, and I don't think we need a, we need a resolution, I don't think we need to do this drafting. Do we want to ask um the building inspector to look at the, to relook at the parking issue?
To consider whether or not it needs a variance for.
Well, just to relook at the, but what's not really to consider that, it's really to look at the parking issue. And what we're really asking him to do is determine if it complies with the requirements of the Marineret Code. That's what we're asking him to do, to look again, to see if it complies with the code.
Yeah, but didn't the planning board go through all of that?
No, Meg is saying, the planning board is not a zoning board, they don't look for zoning violations.
Meg is saying that the, the, the site plan um shows undersized parking spaces.
Are they dimensioned?
They have one that's, that has a measurement, they don't have all the spaces that you know for sure that they're all consistent, but the one that has measurements does not match the code, it's smaller than what the code requires.
It's smaller than nine, it's smaller than nine.
Nine, smaller than that. And also um what I noticed was it looks like supporting uh pillars, something to support the building on top has not been drawn to scale. So I feel that they'll have something stuck out into the spaces that will also make the spaces smaller.
So we don't know, so I think that we can just, the board can request, as a group, as a board, we can request the building inspector to reexamine the parking issue to make a determination whether or not the parking as shown in their plans complies with code. Okay, Meg? Okay.
As far as the structure is concerned.
I should get a uniform, everybody, everyone okay with that? Board, I'll take her to say yes, okay. Okay. Are we, anything else left on this? Okay, can we move on? It's not fair to the other two applicants, even though it's midnight-ish almost.
The other two applicants, it's a closed hearing, right, so they don't, they would not be speaking anyway.
Yeah, yeah, oh, no, I wouldn't. No way we're doing any more speaking, so the two applications. And we can consider the two applications that are closed hearing. We have um, application eight S P twenty twenty nine S P twenty twenty and nine eight twenty twenty, Jean Lum for variance and special permit for.
Can we do one first, can we do the gym first?
Yeah, yeah, fine, uh, take it back, so instead of that, let's do ten S P twenty twenty, we're a ten, a special permit for Project Journey, one of White Marineret Avenue. Someone want to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve it. Uh, with, yes, because um. It's a special permit, so we don't have to go through a balancing test. It's a special permit with the hours that they, I would have to go back and look, but the hours that they had specified, they also had agreed, and this is a condition that I'm saying orally, and we'll have to look at the written test, text, but that they would close the doors whenever they had amplified sound, music or voice amplified. Um, and I, I approve the special permit for, you can do it for a year first, if you have some concern about the traffic and parking, make it a year. I don't know, I don't know, I don't feel that strongly about it.
Three years is, you know, we haven't really had anyone say a problem and we don't know, because nothing's been going on, but three, I think three years if we're gonna do.
Okay.
We could do the normal three years, if it turns out that there's an enormous something happening, you know, who knows, but yeah.
All right, so there's absolutely no outside.
No outside.
Well, they have to keep the doors closed, yeah, so there's no amplified sound or speakers outside either. They cannot have any amplified sound outside, and even when they have an interior, they have to keep the, the doors closed whenever they have.
Not just the doors.
Sorry?
Windows closed, as well as the doors.
Right.
Right. Doors and windows.
Does anyone, everyone, uh, everyone generally agree, does anyone disagree with that?
No, I'm fine.
And Betty Ann, can you find the hours that they had um requested and put those in? I don't have it in front of me, the hours, because we should put that in the permit, that is for the hours that they request.
Yeah, so Betty Ann, if you would write up that one, if Betty Ann, if you would write up that draft resolution.
Was it until ten and then it was, we gave an hour?
But I, I know we were happy with the hours, we didn't have a problem with the hours, so if she could go back to the application and put those hours in, I think we would be in sync with that.
I certainly will.
Thank you.
Of course.
Who's the next one?
No, we have to have a second and.
No, voting, you don't need a second, so that's what we're doing.
Oh, oh, oh.
Betty Ann is gonna write it.
I, I apologize, but we have to be mindful of that sixty-two day timeframe. So once an application or the public hearing's been closed, the board has sixty-two days to make a decision. So in this case.
Will, will you please ask the applicant, I don't remember, he didn't have an attorney, I don't think, so.
Um, he does, he has Leo Napier as his attorney.
Okay, so if you would please ask Leo Napier if we, if we could.
He's right there. He's here and he's requested to talk, so if you would like him to talk.
But the only thing he can talk on is this question, I'm not opening the hearing, that's fine, if he wants to answer this question.
So I actually wanted to, I know, thank you all for um letting me chime in. I, I know you adopted this new policy earlier tonight, I, I would ask if you would just consider to potentially vote on this tonight. That it was held over from the last meeting, and the applicant was actually hoping to start construction in June. Um, your next meeting is until the end of July, which essentially means the building department's not gonna start reviewing plans, and they wouldn't get a permit until, I don't know, August or September. Um, the hours of operation, I could answer that, if that's the question, I can answer that.
No, no, we know, it's six to ten, six A M to ten P M for the workers and ten. Oh, no, that's the wrong application, sorry, never mind, what are the hours?
So it's, it's six A M to eight thirty P M, but that would be the last class start time, so I think ten P M would be the close time. Uh, that's weekdays, and then weekends, it's six A M to four P M on Saturday, so it'd be six to five on Saturdays and seven to one on Sundays.
That's a long day for a gym, given the, I, I said three years, but I'm going back to two years.
That's fine.
I'm okay with.
I don't have a problem with making something a little bit shorter than three years, just to see if that's, should be, it should be no problem, it's a little bit of an inconvenience for the applicant to come back, but um generally, if you have no problem with the neighborhood, it's really pretty rote and then you get approved and it's fine, it's just a check.
No objections.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm okay with, 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 you know, I, I'm okay with um with, with voting on it today, but the rest of the board has to be willing to do that and has to, and then we have to go in more detail through the findings and everything else.
And could we, could we see the draft, I know it's five days and then you have to file, would that be possible, Betty Ann, that you could just to, I thought that you had once did that for me, Robin? Um, it wasn't something we could discuss, but we could read the draft.
Draft, if she's gonna write up, if we're gonna vote today, then Betty Ann is going to prepare the final resolution. I'll review it before I sign it, and you have to sign it so you can review, but all you're reviewing is making sure that really it is what we said, it's good English, it's, you know, written okay, it's got no, no issues, there's nothing else we can do in reviewing it.
What about the whole issue about um building permit within the year? What are we gonna do with, deal with that boilerplate?
That, that's not, they're not asking for a building permit, for a very.
Of course they are.
This is a special permit.
Yes, but they need a building permit because they're gonna do construction in the building, they're gonna, whatever they're doing, they're not walking in and taking the space and immediately changing it. They are going to do working it.
Sorry, okay.
And they're constructing, they need a building permit. Do we usually put a building, Betty Ann, do we usually put a one-year building permit condition on special permits or not?
I think it's an automatic uh condition.
Okay, but we don't need to, we can do whatever we want, so um, and there's nothing in the code that says we have to, so uh, that was a good point. So what do you want to say with respect to, since in this case, there's no demolition, it's not that kind of thing, it's they are getting a permit for alteration. So how, so we, a year to get a permit for alterations, yes?
Alterations to construct the gym as described in their plans.
Right. Right, okay.
Okay.
Are we okay with voting today?
Yes, I am.
Okay, just to go through the special permit findings, make sure that um oh, the special permit, you're right, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm going, you're right, we don't need to make, it's fine, okay, sorry. Okay, Betty Ann, so let's take a vote then, so um Meg, you.
We have a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
I guess I, I made the motion then, what I was doing in a, in a draft form, I officially make that motion.
Right.
Robin second.
Right, okay, Abby?
Yes.
Greta?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Meg?
Yes.
And I vote yes, okay, that is adopted.
Thank you all.
Wait, we have one more, oh, sorry, that was.
Yeah, Leon doesn't have one, he can go home.
Yeah, sorry, I thought that was.
He's all at home already, we're on Zoom.
Um, so then the last one is Jean Lum, and obviously, we are not gonna vote on that because it's a little more complicated. Um, I think it's a little more complicated. My thought, and we talked about this last week, if I can find my, I couldn't find my notes, we talked about this last week, uh, last week, last month, but I think that with respect to this variance, and I will make the motion, just so we can, you know, move it faster.
Sarah, this is another one where you're gonna have to request an extension, I believe.
Okay, so then we will, if you would please ask um his attorney, um, because he did have an attorney, I don't remember who it was, but he did have an attorney. So the applicant, so I would grant the variance.
Sorry, we have a similar situation where they just raised their hand to speak probably on that request, but it's.
It's, yeah, it's Ted Jim Moore.
And he's here, oh, yes, so are you okay with extending it? Mister Demore?
Uh, you're on, your, your mute is on, sir.
Nina, can you let him, him talk, I don't know if it's you or him that's keeping him from talking? Okay.
Mister Demore?
If you're having trouble speaking, can you just send a, a chat? Sorry, can you just send us a, a text in the, you know, can you type in the tat, chat? Or something?
Mute, here, can you hear me?
We got it.
I got it. Okay, um, all right, um, how long uh do I, do you need to extend?
For till the next meeting, which is the end of July.
Uh, do you think you can have a vote and um be done in July, so we don't go over until September?
Yes.
So we can have the vote and the resolution and be done, done, so we can submit plans?
Yes, that's the goal, that's the goal, we will discuss today what we want to do, the uh, Betty Ann will draft it, then we will have a written resolution to vote on and make any changes to in July, so yes, then we would vote in July.
Uh, that sounds like a great goal.
So the extent, you're okay with the extension?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion, um, and I move that we grant a variance to allow. Sorry, I've gotta get the.
I'm sorry, what kind of variance are we granting?
It's a use variant, no, this was a use, they applied for a use variance, that um, that we are granting a use variance to allow a, um, and what they're going to build is they're going to build a ghost kitchen, which is essentially what it is, um, for their um operations of which seventy-five percent, I think it was, do I have this correct?
Yes.
Seventy-five percent of the restaurant would be used as the ghost kitchen, twenty-five percent of the space would be used for retail takeout, for takeout restaurant purposes only, um, that it would be as shown on the plans, that I think that the um that I think that, I think he's, that he has demonstrated that he has um a hardship because he's unable to rent the space for a permitted use that would grant him a reasonable return.
So we'd have to have proven that there was no use that's permitted in the C two, that would work for him. It had to be all uses that are possible, has he proven that? And also that the reason why is to look to his business.
Uh, Meg, we have to go through each of those things separately, right? We can't, it's not like, work, each of those are separate.
Frank, can you put yourself on mute when you're moving the stuff around, it's kind of hard.
Sorry about that.
Um, so, um.
So I wonder, I was, I was thinking about this, that the realtor just opened it up for a tenant, so they could have found a gym or a retail store, it, you know, I don't think that they advert, they might have advertised it was a restaurant, I think I've seen, actually seen it on Zillow, it's just sort of a space. So whether or not we all feel that it was already offered for all, whatever use could possibly be there, do we feel that that was satisfied with the, you know, we saw the realtor had brought so many people in and then nobody else was ready to spend more money? That was just something that I've been thinking about, because I realized in the use variance, it has to be, um, that there was, it's not just that a restaurant wouldn't work, but that there was no other permitted use in the C two that would work there.
I could answer that question, even though the hearing's.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that we want to, thank you, but I think, I don't think we want to um continue that, yeah, we, we, thank you, Mister Demore, but, but we closed the hearing, so I think that's um. They just advertised it, I mean, if we look, I don't think there was any demonstration that they advertised it for a particular use, so I don't know why.
I agree, and I actually saw it, um, because I was looking at residential uses and it was, it just popped up even in what residential uses were available, residences. So I think that they just had it out on the open market for rent. Um, I don't think that, you know, obviously it had been a restaurant, but I think they were ready for a, any and all. So um I'm ready to say that they had attempted all uses and couldn't find anybody. And if I could move on from there, I also know that in the use variance, it's supposed to be particular to this location, it can't be that all restaurants now don't work in that area, because that would be changing what's possible in that zone. And so I was thinking about the low roof in the back, that what's particular about the situation is that it's a lot of square footage that you're having to either rent or purchase, but you're, because they were gonna buy or sell, and so much of it cannot be used for purposes that would make a lot of money, that that's what's particular maybe about this physical location, where others have um, you're not, you're not buying or renting so much of a space that you cannot actually use for making money. That's, I was trying to think of what um findings would, would, would work.
Couldn't, couldn't we just use, you know, you know, the applicant wrote findings, some are, you know, made an argument for each of the findings? Couldn't that be the basis of our um resolution and our findings?
I thought what the applicant wrote was a little bit of a mismatch between area and use, and so I went back and was really looking at what, what you need to find for a use variance. I don't know that the applicant said all uses in the C two, and I don't know that the, the applicant addressed the fact that it's supposed to be very special for this particular location, and it's not something that is the same for everybody else in the area. Um, so that's why I went to, I know that they spoke at length about how low the ceiling was in the back, and that was a large portion of it.
What it is, that there are building restrictions, the property itself has restrictions that limit the sale or rental opportunity. It's a ceiling height limitation. It's a low HP.
I think what we have to say is that, um, the alleged hardship is unique, um, the hardship results from the physical dimensions of the building, and that is unique to this building, I think that's all we have to say.
Right.
Okay.
And I think also they had, I think we, I had asked about that, and I think they had said that the cost of correcting that was, um, yeah, was very high.
Yeah.
And then even if they were gonna make it an art studio, or a, a gym, or something, you generally want taller, it's not even just for a restaurant, pretty much for anything that's significant.
I think we should say that they, that they, uh, what was, that they, um, that the ceilings were low, and the cost of retrofitting it for a, or rebuilding it would be extensive and would reduce.
Prohibitive, yeah.
Okay. It will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood because, um-
I would say the front-facing part is actually going to be retail and open for takeout, which is very similar to the rest of the, the avenue. So that it goes, is actually not visible from the street, that you're not seeing it as an industrial space?
I, I don't think that's enough, because they could, anybody could just say, oh, well, I have my industrial use in the back, so therefore, I think the point is that what it really is, is a restaurant, you, I mean, what they're doing is they're cooking, cooking is what is done everywhere else on Marinerick Avenue, the difference is that the cooking is not directly related to on-premises eating, which is normally what happens on Marinerick Avenue, and so it is, um, similar to the uses to which it is, um, ghost kitchens. Now, in the applicant, and, and they had hours, uh, that was the 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM for the workers, and 10:00 to 10:00 for the public. They also had numbers of people, um, who will, actually, we do that in the kitchens, um, it will, and the alleged hardship has not been self-created, well, arguably, it has been self-created, well, we don't know who built the building, so I don't know who, whether it's self-created or not. Um, so, I think it's just, it's a, it's got to do with the building, they didn't just, oh, it's not like they bought it and overpaid for something, um, it's, so I don't think-
Maybe it's just over time, that the need for a higher-
Higher ceiling is probably right.
Oh, that they just developed it.
Yeah, I mean, I think with the, uh, my notes said, it was in the family for 50 years, so it could have been that, yeah, that the, um, the business model evolved such that it's no longer viable.
And they may have made it work, they, when they, when they operated it, they had the building, so they made it work, but no one else wants to take the risk of making it work. Um, okay, so the conditions are the hours, now, they had a number of people, um, which I don't remember that, but they talked about the number of people, um,
I thought it was also the square footage, didn't they need a variance for the square footage that would be used for industrial, or once we do this?
That's what the variance is for.
Well, I, I, well, I thought the use variance was for the use, but that's fine, if it's incorporated in there, that, because you're allowed to have industrial, if you sell on retail, but it, it was too large a space, but now-
We're not, we don't need that, we're giving them a use variance to use this space for, um-
How about a special permit for using it as the food operation?
Wait, stop. Before you get to the special permit, let's finish the use variance question. Let's, let's, let's finish the use variance, okay? So, um, the variance, and because the variance, remember, runs with the land, it does not have a limit, that anyone else who wants to come in can come in, which is fine, and put in a ghost kitchen. So I think the number of employees and the hours are, it is a, uh, there's some issue obviously with number, but it's a ghost kitchen, and the reason, because, um, it won't alter the essential character of the neighborhood, because it has these hours that are consistent with other hours of other operations on the neighborhood. It has to keep the parking area in the back for the, um, delivery trucks, for the people, both delivery of food, you know, their supplies come in through the back, and the, uh, trucks that are picking up for delivery to other restaurants, all of their delivery has to be through their parking lot in the back.
Can we regulate how large the trucks can be? Can we, can we make the size? No?
I don't think so, I don't, I think that's really operations. I don't know that we-
And so then, can we, since this is gonna run with the land, this is a ghost kitchen for their other sources out there, they're not turning this into a national catering place.
That's right, it's for their, it's-
A limitation on what they're using the ghost kitchen for.
It is a ghost kitchen for their own businesses. In other words, it's not like-
Local businesses, can you say, are, okay.
No, no, it's not local, the point is, you can have ghost kitchens, in other words, there can be spaces where, um, we have ghost kitchens for Mexican restaurant, we have ghost kitchens for, you know, um, um, Jose's Mexican Restaurant, and, um, Jane's American Restaurant, and, I don't know, and they're all different businesses. Here, it's all of their businesses, it's, it would be ghost kitchens for related businesses, for one, I don't know how we do that, but for, um-
It, it can't be for the owners' own businesses, it can't be the, for the-
Yeah, no, that's, that's fine, if we owners' own businesses, that's fine, so I was trying to think of related, but that would work, I think that works, I don't know, I mean, I mean, Christie, if this is a problem, you should tell us.
All right, I'm here, I'm here.
I was, I was saying is if this is a problem, you should tell us, um, if we limit, no, okay, fine, okay, that was it. You can go back to. Um, okay, so it's, so those are the conditions of the variance, oh, it says, yes. Um, and the deliveries of, of finished materials from vans in the rear parking lot, probably, well, they say twice per day, but they don't really know, so we just have to say that, um, it's delivery in the rear, um.
If it's near residences in the back, can we limit the hours of when it's delivered or not, so that it's not distributed to the-
Okay with that, except I, we didn't really discuss it with them, and I don't know what would be good, I don't know what's appropriate hours here.
Well, at least they have their own parking lot, there, it's not-
Yeah, that's, it's a big deal, it's a, um, I don't know what's a big parking lot, um, now, what we could, and maybe we could do this, is, um, maybe we could, aha, provided the parking, the, the delivery is undertaken in such a way as to not cause, as to not cause a nuisance, a nuisance for the neighbors. At such times as will not be, um, a nuisance for neighbors, I don't know, something like that, leave it a little vague, and that gives a, it a, it's a little vague, it strikes me as maybe not, I don't know.
That can be taken a lot of ways for-
I know, I, so that's why I'm not really-
Make it a little more restrictive, because we have had issues, um, with delivery.
So you, are you, are you concerned that if you, you put hours, when we didn't know what their hours were, if you actually say you cannot do it between 8:00 PM and 6:00 AM, you think that that's gonna-
So after, um, it says the hours of operations are 6:00 to 10:00 PM, they can't have deliveries at any other time. Has to be between 6:00 PM and, 6:00 AM and 10:00 PM, because that's their hours of operations.
Early for a delivery when you-
Exactly, so what I'm concerned of is we, I don't have a problem with actually saying a time, you know, in terms of, I think it's fine to say a time, um, so let's say not before 8:00 AM, no deliveries before 8:00 AM.
And not, not past, can we say 7:00 PM or 8:00 PM at night, so that they're not unloading late at night?
I think unloading is gonna be the problem, I think that what they're gonna be, the question is whether or not if they're picking up from here to deliver to other restaurants, right, this isn't a ghost kitchen in the sense of, I don't call them up and say, I, Robin, wanna make an order, and they have 20 people, they're just, it's a, it's a ghost, it's a kitchen for supplying other, wait, 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 before you do, I wanna make sure that this is in there. A kitchen for supplying other restaurants, not for, you can't call up an order, it doesn't do takeout orders for individuals. All they're doing is supplying other restaurants that they-
I thought through the front, through the retail they are.
Yes, except for the retail they can, but the ghost kitchen-
The only wholesale sales are for-
But it's not, I don't think we can say wholesale, because I don't know what that means in the restaurant area, I think it is for supplying their own restaurants, not for supplying the-
It's just that the definition, that, that the reason why they needed a use variance was said, it was okay as long as you sell retail on the spot. So that's why I was making the distinction between wholesale and retail, that's all. You're saying wholesale means you're selling it to your, as a general way. But, but we don't understand the operation, I am concerned about the late hours and the early morning hours, you don't know that they're coming back with trays or metal things, and they shove them back, so even though they're not catering, I still think we should put some time limit as to when the trucks can, can load and unload, between 8:00 and 8:00 PM, say.
Walked over with the clock to show me the time.
Yeah, but the restaurant, the, the restaurants are open beyond that time, so he's gonna be shuttling food back and forth beyond 8:00 PM.
Well, they, no, but this is just-
So putting a restriction like that, I don't know.
It's just to get the whole load of food that you already are gonna sell, if it's after 8:00 and you're still delivering, it's not like New York City, that I think they're hustling that much, that they have to resupply between 8:00 and 10:00, they can make their effort to-
Back, so the truck went at 7:00 to do, to deliver food to Restaurant One, and it comes back at 8:30.
Okay, so we say 9:00, I don't want it to go all the way, like 11:00 or midnight.
Hours of operations are 10:00 PM, so they can't deliver anything after 10:00 PM, it shuts down at 10:00 PM, period.
Let's just make sure that we say that it cannot pick up or deliver outside their hours of-
I, I'm okay with moving the early morning to 8:00, I mean, I think delivery to 8:00 in the back there is fine. We could start to, not, delivery not starting before 8:00 AM.
You know, think about it, are they really gonna start delivering at 8:00?
Well, what they, I don't know, remember, they're not, not likely to start, remember, there are two kinds of deliveries here, one, you have meats, right, you have butcher, right, Smith Butcher, Smith Butcher is going to bring-
The plow coming in to car.
In, right, and then they're going to, they're gonna take the meat, they do what they do with the meat, they cook it up in the different ways for their, their restaurants, and then they take it out again, I don't think they're gonna be taking it out again until, I don't know, lunchtime, dinnertime, whatever the appropriate time is. Um, we didn't ask enough detail, we didn't, but, um, um, okay. Well, well, so we have a general idea of how we're going, and then when we look at it, we can always be more specific. Um, so now, we have, there's two possibilities that occurred to me with respect to the special permit issue, but I think, okay, so that's for the 75% of the space that we are granting the use variance, where so the other 25% of the space, they need a special permit for-
Food establishment.
Food establishment, for, so it is a takeout-only food establishment, it's at the same hours, um, as the ghost kitchen. Um, it is, it has, the, the, the takeout is related to the ghost kitchen, in other words, they cannot, it can't be like they can just rent to a separate restaurant, it has to be an affiliated restaurant. It's not a separate business, we're not having two businesses here, one business which does both ghost kitchen and, and since what we can only do is the special permit, whoa, ah, here's what we can do, the, the, the go, the variance has to be, the use is, is including, so it's a use variance for a, this industrial use of kitchen, and 75% of the space, um, provided, right, 75% of the space, and there's a special permit for a related use in the 25% of the space. And it's got the same, food establishment, right, the 25% of the space, but it's gonna be related to the business that is operating pursuant to the variance, it's got the same hours, and they told us numbers of people, which I don't remember, so between now and then, we'll have to go double-check, or if Betty Ann, or if somebody knows.
I always put in the same, if they have amplified sound or music in their business, to keep windows and doors closed by 10:00.
Right. And the, the, the whole thing shuts at 10:00 PM, so I don't think it matters.
I- Don't know, okay.
Is that generally what everybody wants to do? Anybody have any thoughts?
No, I think, I think it's, I think it's a good, um, groundwork.
Okay.
And we can look at the draft, and then we can tweak it as needed.
Perfect. Doug and Abby, okay with that?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, um, I think we're done for tonight. We are not unfortunate, I didn't think, I knew it would take a while, I didn't think it would take this long, I know Betty Ann wants us to do minutes.
I didn't have anything to say about the minutes.
I had several edits. Um, if I'm the only one who had edits, mostly language, I'll just figure out how to scan them in at home, and scan then my comments into Betty Ann. Did everybody else go through them? Anybody else have any thoughts, comments?
Are we gonna get just, uh, transcripts now, or are we getting minutes? I wasn't quite sure, so. Betty Ann, I just was curious, because we got something today in our Google Drive that was like a transcript of the thing, is that replacing minutes?
So, um, while we do meetings in Zoom, that's pretty much the requirement, that's the way the, uh, the emergency order came out, so-
I started reading, it's like, I am reading the entire meeting, this is gonna take-
I didn't see that.
That was in the Google Drive that we got, just like yesterday.
I guess I didn't see that, it was too-
Yeah, yeah, so, once we go back to regular meetings, then we can go back to action, bulleted minutes, but, um, for now, the requirement is, is that we have, uh, them transcribed.
Okay, um, so we're done, right?
Hey. Hi, everybody.
All right, wait, I motioned to adjourn.
Wait, wait, so did we wait?
Yes.
Do we motion to approve the minutes, or?
Subject to my edits, does anyone else have edits?
No.
No.
I said, no, I, I-
Brad, I'm sorry, Robin, yours basically text, text, there are nothing substantive, uh, changes?
Well, they're not, they're substantive only when, this isn't what was said, or, you know, like, I'll give you an example, I'll just pull out some of my comments, if I can find them quickly. Uh, some of it is, is tech, is technical, like, businesses, plural. It's a pretty basic.
I don't have a problem with that.
Oh, oh, I know, so the more substantive ones are just clarifications, like, on one of them, it says, um, findings, and then deliberations, but it says, there will be an undesirable change, and then it says, we grant the variance because there won't be an undesirable change. So one of those is wrong, so, to clarify what it is, so it's either clarification or pure edits.
So now, this is four sets, it's January 9th, January 21st, February 6th, and March 5th.
Right.
Motion to approve the minutes. Object to.
Could, could, um, Robin, could you send those to Betty Ann, and then Betty Ann, could you send those edits to us? So we can look at them?
Before you approve them?
No, we're voting now, it's gonna have to be, if somebody has a problem with it, it could just be that, a subject to any, um-
It's subjected to your edits only.
That, right, but Greta is saying that they want, she wants to review my edits, um, so in which case, she's either voting now, we're either voting to approve it, subject to my edits, or we're not voting subject to my edits, so I don't know what Greta wants to do. What Greta's saying.
Um, well, I think I'd like to see your edits.
Betty Ann, are we just holding you up, Betty Ann, are we just holding you up sort of administratively, or?
I'd like to do this all now, you want me to just read them now? I'm happy to do it now, but I didn't want it to stay.
You know what?
No, I, I mean, I kinda, I'd like to read it, I'm not really a listener, I'm more of a reader.
So, Cher, did you like?
Robin.
I'm happy to do that, but then I don't see how we can vote, because if Greta has a, and I'm not saying there's a problem, that's okay that Greta disagrees with my edits, I'm not arguing that she can't disagree with it, if, if, if I had made a more substantive comment, and Greta had a comment with it, and she says, no, no, no.
Even if I disagree, it's, I'm just voting on something, I don't know what they are.
Well, I'm not arguing with your ability to do that, that's not like what I'm saying, what I'm saying is, I don't see how we can vote. I send out my edits, you have a problem with my edits, and then you may be right in your comment, I'm not saying your comment on my edit is wrong, um, then had, what does Betty Ann do, and that's what I'm concerned about.
Yeah, well, can we vote on it next, next meeting? Can we push it to next meeting?
I will, fine, I will circulate my comments, I have the only edits, and, and you, and since everyone said they didn't have any comments, you have, the, what you can all do is make comments to my edits, if I have, if there's a problem with my edits.
Perfect. Perfect.
Uh, you don't have to send them to me, I'll take your edits as they are.
Well, Betty Ann is gonna circulate them, I'm not sending them, I'm sending them to Betty Ann, she'll circulate them, you can ignore them.
Okay, approving them on that condition that we can edit your edits?
No, no, we are not approving them today.
Okay, okay, so then, we're gonna go, oh, we're gonna make a motion to-
We're not making a motion at all, what's gonna-
Don't make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Yes, we are making a motion to do that, make the motion.
To adjourn.
Yes.
We need a second.
Yeah, I seconded it, I just made it into a second, he seconded it.
Okay, thank you, Nina and Betty, and, thank you.
Yes, thank you, everyone, good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Night.